Good evening, if I may have your attention. Welcome to the Wareham Planning Board meeting of Monday, September 23rd, 2024, in the Multi Service Center, Room 520, and broadcast via Zoom and Wareham Media. I'll call the meeting to order and begin with a roll call, starting on my left.
Mike Baptiste here.
Jane Gleason here.
Julie Moran here.
And Carl Schultz, Chair, here. We have a full board and a quorum, and so I'll open the meeting. Preliminary business. I didn't see minutes, did we? I know, I did see them, I saw them from Patty, but I didn't see them. Did we distribute them?
We may not have.
Okay, all right, so.
Yeah, take it up at your next meeting.
Great.
Continue it, and I'll make sure it gets on the agenda.
Great, thank you. So we'll skip that. Item two on the agenda was a placeholder, in case we had an issue to deal with. That issue has been resolved, or it was resolved Thursday night, so there were no carry forward issues. So, item two on the agenda is, we're not going to take that up. Item three, Peyton Estates, the subdivision. We've been discussing a release of covenant and an acceptance of surety for the subdivision. We have not resolved that issue yet, so I'd like to take it up first. John, is anybody from the applicant, Mr. Titlebaum?
Peter.
Okay, you can let him in, but, Peter, right now I don't think you need to say anything, but if we need you, we'll draw you in. Is he ready?
He may not have heard what you just said, because when you joined as a panel, it kind of...
Yeah. Okay, so, we're going to take up the discussion of the performance bond, or the surety for Peyton Estate. As you know, we've been discussing this, I'll just go a little bit of a procedural history, we've been discussing this for some weeks. We have a schedule of values from the applicant and Mr. Cordero. We have sent that and the bond to the Select Board, who accepted the form of surety and have returned it to us. At our last meeting, we were unable to come to a decision about releasing the covenant in lieu of a surety, and that matter still is open, and I would like to bring it to a close, one way or the other, tonight. Since that time, I met with counsel and just discussed our options with him, and his advice, or the summary of his discussion, and Mr. Titlebaum was there at the time as well. His opinion was, we did not include the Squirrel Island polls in the condition at the time, even though the discussion was there, it did not get recorded as a decision. We discussed the gentleman's, the condition, I'm sorry. We discussed the gentleman's agreement, we discussed Mr. Churchill's efforts, we discussed the change in position by Eversource, he cogitated on all that, and the only opinion that he, I think, was asked to offer was that we cannot, his opinion is, we cannot attach a condition to this surety, because it was not part of the original condition. So that's where we left it, and I said I would bring it back to the board. I don't know if we need any more deliberation, I think the applicant has made their position clear, has discussed what they can and can't do. I believe where they left it is, Mr. Churchill is going to continue to work on resolving it, but he can't commit to that. And then, I know there's board positions, but we, I would like to bring this to a close. So do we need any more discussion, or?
I don't need any more discussion.
Okay.
Nor do I.
Mike, do you have anything?
I don't agree with counsel.
Well, okay.
Well, I don't either, I'm voting no.
Well, okay, just, I didn't ask for your vote. Right now, I just want to make sure everybody has a...
Yep.
...an opportunity to, I didn't think there's any new information, other than advice at counsel. Jane, do you think there's any questions that you have?
No.
All right. So, does anyone disagree with my desire to close this, either up or down, one way or the other? Because the applicant needs to either know they can move forward, or know that they have to go appeal, if they choose.
I understand.
Okay. So, I am looking for a motion for action. Anyone want to make a motion?
Yes, I understand Rich's, Attorney Bowen's position, that it was not made a condition of the permit. So, my motion is, I'd make a motion to release the covenant and accept the surety.
And do I have a second?
You have a second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Julie Moran, a second by Jane Gleason. Any, we, no more discussion, I think. So, this would be a simple majority vote. Mr. Baptiste?
Mike Baptiste votes no.
Ms. Gleason?
So, in light of what Attorney Bowen had to say, and in light of my consideration of it, at originally $5,000, and boosted by Eversource to $100,000 proposition to fix those polls, looking at the two lots of the subdivision, it goes from being about 1% of the cost of the, or the value of those two lots, which is a reasonable request, to about 20% of the value of those lots, which is, I think, an undue burden on a two-lot subdivision. It is, with that in mind, it is, I don't feel that it can be, that they can have their feet held to the fire for such an increase. I know that that can be a do-or-die amount of increase, and I believe that, I will say that it's my fervent hope that Mr. Churchill continues his efforts to resolve this situation. I hope that, I would love to see it be that the neighborhood comes together, and all of the residents who will either benefit from the change, or suffer the not-change of the polls, get involved in this resolution of this, because I think it's for all of them to benefit or not benefit from. So, with that being said, and my hope that that effort goes forward, I give it an aye.
Sam Corbett votes no.
Julie Moran, I absolutely agree, Jane, with what you just said, shared. It, my hope, along with what Jane has said, Attorney Titlebaum, that your client is working with the solar people to try to resolve that situation. I think that the neighbors have been very patient, and continue to have some issues that I'm hoping that your client will address, certainly the surety will help that. But, it is, yes, it's a two-lot subdivision, the jump of Eversource, amazing increase for what should be a somewhat simple issue, is unfortunate. So, I vote aye, but with my urging that, please, resolve that on behalf of the neighbors.
Thank you. And the Chair votes aye, I have nothing to add, I support Ms. Gleason's summary. So the motion carries 3-2-0. Thank you. I have, I guess we have to sign some paperwork, Peter, I'll figure that out. Thank you. All right. Okay, we're gonna, I'm surprised, is Ms. Morton, or the applicant, for 370 County Road on Zoom? Maybe they didn't, they didn't feel, they didn't have to be here, I didn't know if they were going to be or not.
Is Morton in?
Morton, or Ms. Zimmer?
Might be there.
Or the engineer? Huh?
Eric.
Chrysler, okay.
Eric's there.
Yeah, so we're not, we don't need them to speak, but if they're there, I'll know, we can let them in if there's a question, or...
I'll let them in now.
Okay, yeah, just keep them muted, then. Okay, we're going to move on to item four, discussion and possible vote on findings of fact for 1223 370 County Road LLC, site plan review, and special permit. So, this is, I think, our 19th solar project, but we're going to do this one, oh, there's Ms. Morton, thank you. We have been, as a town, dealing with these for the last six or seven years, and we're continuing to refine and improve our process, and with the goal of including and being more transparent, and making sure that we're getting all perspectives, we've taken a slightly different approach for this meeting. So tonight, we're going to deliberate on findings of fact to, for this application. I thank members of the public who did contribute to that, I thank Attorney Morton for her and her applicant's contribution. The Planning Board has worked for the last two weeks to synthesize, integrate, understand all of that input, and we did produce a deliberation document that we're using tonight to help guide our discussions. So, the first phase will be a deliberation on findings of fact related to this application. The approach we're going to use is, I'm going to ask the clerk, Ms. Moran, to read each finding of fact from our deliberation document. Once she reads that, the board will discuss, clarify, confirm, refine the wording, and then, once our deliberations are done, I will ask the clerk, Ms. Moran will make a motion, rather than searching around for somebody to make a motion, the clerk will make all the motions to either affirm, or deny, or some other, but, and then, Mr. Corbett will second each of those motions, and...
Necessarily.
Well, you could second them, I didn't say you had to agree with them.
True, true.
And then, we will then take a yes/no vote on either affirming, or, not affirming, those findings. There are, I think, what did we get up to? I think there are 30, 32 findings of fact that we'll go through, after we've deliberated on the findings of fact, and we've made a finding for each of those, if there are any additional ones that members of the board want to add, or think that we've missed, we can, we'll take those up, and then we'll close that part of the session. Having deliberated on all the findings of fact, I'll look for a motion to move to a vote on the application, and that would be a vote for approval, or a vote for denial, based on what we've deliberated. If we have a vote for approval, we'll go through the conditions of approval, we have 63 conditions, that we're not going to, I promise you, we're not going to try and read all 63 of the conditions, but I will, we'll have general discussion about the conditions, and come to some sort of conclusion about those conditions, and then, we'll close the hearing at that point. That, it's not a hearing, I'm sorry, we'll close the deliberation at that point. Okay. Any questions? The board's okay with that? All right. Okay, Ms. Moran?
Just a couple of points. The public hearing is closed, just to remind folks, so there is no further input, participation allowed, we are unable to take any further comments, so I just wanted to mention that. And then I'll talk later about the public hearing. Okay, I'm going to start with, this is decision of the Wareham Planning Board, site plan review, special permit, 370 County Road Solar Project. I'm going to read through each statement of findings, I'm going to ask for discussion, if any, and then we will move to affirm or not affirm the particular finding. This is under procedural history, we'll start with procedural history. Number one, the application was submitted by Patricia Zimmer on July 20th, 2023, on behalf of 370 County Road LLC. Have a motion to affirm or not affirm that finding?
You make the motion.
I'll make it, okay.
You make that motion to affirm.
Yep, okay, sorry. Motion, I'll make the motion to affirm that finding. Have a second?
All in favor of that? Mr. Baptiste?
Aye.
Jane Gleason, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
Julie Moran, aye.
And I don't think there's any discuss, these are just historic, these are just historical, this set.
Yep. Number two, do we have the publication dates?
Josh, did you get the publication dates yet? So rather than reading the dates, the hearings were duly noticed, in the final documents, should this get approved, we'll have the dates. A question for Attorney Morton, do you happen to know the dates of the public hearing notices in the paper, or you don't know that often? We can get them too, I just didn't have them in my draft.
Okay.
Okay, so just say...
So we will, yes, number two.
Well, they were duly noticed, so just read it as duly noticed.
The Board, the Planning Board caused notice of the public hearing to be published in the Wareham Week Newspaper of General Circulation, Wareham. Again, the dates will be provided, but they were duly confirmed, that it was duly published. Notice of the public hearing was posted in the Wareham Town Office Building, with the Town Clerk, and on the official town website, commencing on date, again, within the window of notice, and continuing through the opening of the public hearing, on the first date of the hearing. Said notice of publication hearing was mailed, posted prepaid to all parties in interest, including the Planning Boards of budding towns, and again, we'll be inserting that date. And then, just a "and" to eliminate from that, it's just a typo.
Okay.
Could I have a motion to affirm this?
You make the motion.
Yes, sorry. Motion to affirm this finding.
Second. Mr. Baptiste?
Aye.
Jane Gleason, aye.
Julie Moran, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
Sorry, okay.
You get to vote, you have to vote. Oh, you don't get, I'm sorry.
I don't vote.
Please note, Ms. Moran is not eligible to vote, and so only four members of the board will be voting. And the Chair votes aye.
Okay.
Okay. Number three, peer review of the application and plans were conducted by the towns consulting engineering firm of Allen and Major's Associates LLC. A&amp;M submitted documents September 6th, 2023, February 26th, 2024, and March 20th, 2024, outlining deficiencies and recommendations. The applicant provided responses dated January 23rd, 2024, and March 6th, 2024. Motion to affirm, and move to affirm.
There was one final sentence here.
Yeah, the final plan sets based on those were submitted on May 28th, that's related to that.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Okay, so, motion to, you made a motion to affirm?
I did.
Mr. Corbett seconded. Mike?
Aye.
Jane Gleason, aye.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye.
Okay, number four, the public hearing opened, just a typo there, on September 11th, 2023, continued public hearings were held on December 11th, 2023, continued January 8th, 2024, continuance was denied, again, January 22nd, 2024, denial was reconsidered, February 26th, 2024, March 25th, 2024, May 13th, 2024, June 10th, 2024, June 24th, 2024, and August 12th, 2024. The Planning Board accepted public comments via Zoom, mail, and email. Motion to affirm.
Second.
Mike Baptiste, aye.
Jane Gleason, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
And the Chair votes aye.
Number five, Wareham Planning Board members Carl Schultz, Jane Gleason, accept meeting on February 26th, 2024. Sam Corbett and Michael Baptiste participate in all the public hearings through June 31st, 2024. Chair Michael King presided over the public hearings through June 31st, 2024, except for the January 22nd, 2024 meeting, where Ms. Gleason acted as chair in his absence, and May 13th, 2024, where Carl Schultz acted as chair in his absence. Motion to affirm.
May I, may I make a comment on that, that I have reviewed the tape, the video, or the disc from that meeting on 2/26/24, and confirmed that with the Town Clerk?
Which you recorded at our last meeting, so...
Yes, okay, I just want to make sure that that's...
Perfecting your eligibility to move. So, Mr. Baptiste?
Aye.
Jane Gleason, aye.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye.
Number six, Wareham Planning Board members Jane Gleason, Sam Corbett, Michael Baptiste, and Julie Moran, participate in all the public hearings beginning July 1st. Carl Schultz presided over the public hearings beginning July 1st, 2024. The Board closed the public hearing on August 12th, 2024. Motion to affirm.
Second.
Aye.
Jane Gleason, aye.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye.
Okay. On April 23rd, 2024, members of the Board, representative of property owner and the applicant, visited the site of the proposed project. Have a motion to affirm.
Second.
Aye.
Jane Gleason, aye.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye.
On August 12th, 2024, the Planning Board invited the applicant and members of the public to submit findings of fact, not later than September 9th, 2024, to be considered in the final deliberations. Have a motion to affirm.
Second. Mike?
Aye.
Jane Gleason, aye.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye.
Number nine, Wareham Planning Board members Carl Schultz, Jane Gleason, Sam Corbett, and Michael Baptiste, deliberated on the application at a meeting on September 23rd, 2024. May I have a motion to affirm?
Second.
Aye.
Jane Gleason, aye.
And the Chair votes, oh, and the Chair votes aye.
Moving on to project-specific findings?
Yes.
Okay. Just looking here. Number one, under Mass. General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 13, Paragraph 9, protect solar energy systems from local regulation, except as determined by regulation that is necessary to protect the public health, safety, or welfare. Can I have a motion to affirm?
No, no, you make the motion to affirm.
Yes, I know.
Where are we? Sorry.
Motion to affirm, sorry.
I'm sorry, what's the question?
I've got the wrong, page 5 of 21.
Oh, did you print the earlier version?
I think I've got the earlier version.
Okay. I just changed the order, that's all.
Okay.
All right, did we get a motion and a second?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Aye.
Jane Gleason, aye.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye.
Okay. Siting facilities, the application comports with the citing and filing requirements of zoning barrows of the town of Wareham, April 2023, as amended, Section 320 Table of Principal Use Regulations. This parcel was zoned R60. Large-scale ground-mounted solar energy systems are permitted use in the R60 district, requiring site plan review approval with a special permit. Motion to affirm.
Second.
Aye.
Jane Gleason, aye.
Aye, and the Chair votes aye.
The applicant proposes two separate solar arrays, a, we are not, we do not have confirmation of the megawatt ground-mounted solar energy...
Okay.
...system.
We don't have the megawatts, so that will end up being your condition? I'll make a motion to amend on condition.
Jane, I may have printed the, a previous version as well, I don't think mine are lining up.
Yeah, I'm a little lost here for a second.
I think I did.
Okay. Well, that should line up.
That's the same.
I think if the only thing you did was reorder them, then...
I know, I added, I added some at the end.
Yeah.
But why does...
I printed out yours.
Oh, you printed it out.
I printed it out.
Sam printed it out, okay.
This is one.
All right, so just, just put those aside, you and Mike can look at...
Yeah, I'm just gonna...
Chair.
You and Mike can share, I know what they say.
I think I got the same.
Yes, the ones that Josh printed for tonight, don't try and reconcile it, because I made an update, he printed an earlier version.
I'm trying to keep track of...
The numbers are just different, that's all.
So this is two.
And then, I added some at the end. So we'll go slow if we get out of whack.
Three is... Okay.
Once they catch up, we'll redo your motion and be quick.
So we're on item four?
Item three. On page five, if you have the new version.
It's citing, right?
Yeah, but there are two of them that are citing, because I've...
There are several that are citing, it's the first one that is citing.
Yes, it's the second citing of facilities.
This is four.
I suggest you don't look at the old one, except for your notes.
All right, yeah, that's what I'm trying to track up. All right, can I mark this up?
Yes.
Okay. Is that okay to do?
All right, so reread the motion.
I will. So this is number three...
As I said, we're getting, getting used to the new process.
Yes, this is number three on citing of facilities. The applicant proposes two separate solar arrays, megawatt, we will be determining that through the condition. Ground-mounted solar energy system on the property identified by the Wareham Assessor's Parcel, map 64 lots, 1006, 1,008, 1,009, and 1010, map 65 lots, 1,000A, 1,000B, and 1,001. An area of approximately 2.53 acres will be cleared for solar array number one, area of approximately 7.14 acres will be cleared for solar array number two. Discussion?
Second.
Motion to affirm.
Well, discussion, will clarify the total solar, under the next item, there is a bylaw restriction that the total solar megawatt capacity cannot be greater than 5,000 kilowatts. Now, I didn't want to say 5,000 megawatts, I, can't be... We'll get it in the final findings.
Okay.
So, we'll condition that...
Yes.
And...
Exactly.
Okay, so you read the citing?
Mm-hmm, it'll be conditioned.
It's been seconded?
Yep.
And, Mr. Baptiste?
Aye.
Jane Gleason, aye.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye.
Number four, citing of facilities, the application comports with the citing of filing requirements of zoning barrows of the town of Wareham, April 2023, as amended, Section 594.3, restricted citing large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations, size between 250 kilowatts and 5,000 kilowatts are allowed, subject to site plan review, special permit in the R130, R60, CGCS, IND, CR districts, or as noted. A, ground-mounted solar energy facilities on a ground field, ground-mounted solar energy facilities cited on eligible landfills, ground-mounted solar energy facilities cited on sand, sand or gravel, D, canopy-mounted solar energy facilities, E, public utility solar energy facilities, F, ground-mounted solar energy facilities within a farm or existing agricultural land, ground-mounted solar energy facilities cited on land that has been previously disturbed. A motion to affirm.
Second.
Aye.
Jane Gleason, aye.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye, with the understanding that item F...
F.
Was the, this is a agricultural...
Farm or existing agricultural land.
Yes, so that's, so yes.
Okay. Number five, sustainable, climate-sensitive, and environmentally-conscious design. While this project creates much-needed sustainable energy, the Planning Board finds that the applicant's proposed design on its own is not environmentally conscious. Motion?
Discussion.
Yes.
So, I believe, are you rising for some reason?
For the border. And I'm sorry to raise this, after a little water has gone over the dam, but I believe that a person who's not eligible to vote can't move.
Can't make the motion.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I didn't realize that.
That might have had floor in this.
Okay. So we've got...
Do we have to go back and vote on all those other...
Probably should, yeah.
Well, I think the reading is appropriate, but I think we need to make motions, someone needs to make a motion on each one, and then, a motion to affirm.
Just on your point of order, can you cite, for the record, your reference as to why, how you established that fact?
I can't off the top of my head, but it's sort of commonly understood, under Robert's Rules of Order, that a person who's not able to vote can't, can't make a motion.
Okay, I asked earlier if we had a parliamentarian tonight, and we didn't, so I'll defer to you, because we don't have a parliamentarian.
I used to be a parliamentarian.
Okay, well, and, given that I am the clerk, that would, we have to appoint a presiding clerk.
Okay, so let's stop for a second.
Aye.
All learning, okay, so...
And my apologies for not raising this more quickly.
Yep, that's helpful.
Thank you, thank you, okay. So, the first motion, Sam, do you have a question?
Does she still read?
Yeah. Yeah, we'll let her read.
Okay.
She can read them, right?
Yes.
She just can't make the motion.
Correct.
So we could go back and, we could go back and make the motions for ones that have already been read without rereading them.
Yes.
Absolutely, in fact, you may be able to.
To clump them together.
Yes, that was my question.
So the first thing, let's move to, to appoint a clerk pro tem. I'm looking for a motion and someone to be, or pro tem. I don't think there's any work involved, who being clerk pro tem, other than signing the minutes.
Yeah, no, I've been keeping notes anyway, so.
All right, can you make a motion to appoint Ms. Gleason, clerk, pro tem?
Appoint Jane Gleason pro tem clerk.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. I'm sorry.
Do I get to vote if it's?
You can vote if you want to.
Gleason, aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I would like a motion to affirm.
Let's group them.
The, the procedural history items one through nine. Motion to affirm procedural history items one through nine.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
All, all in favor?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. I'd like a motion to affirm project-specific items, one, two, three, and four.
Yeah, we did get to five.
Did we get to five?
No.
One, two, three, and four procedural findings.
So moved. I mean, make their motion.
Motion to affirm, a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mike Baptiste, all in favor?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Okay, so, moving forward, as clerk pro tem, Ms. Gleason, could, once we have the reading and discussion, can you make the motion to affirm? Or, there's one or two that I want to propose a different motion, and I'll let you know when we get there.
Okay.
Okay, so, let's go back to.
Five.
We're reading, is everybody citing conditions number five?
Correct. Sustainable, climate-sensitive, environmentally-conscious design. While this project creates much-needed sustainable energy, the planning board finds that the applicant's proposed design on its own is not environmentally conscious.
Okay, so, I'd like to deliberate on this, but go ahead.
Okay, I was gonna say, I, I move that we affirm.
But let's deliberate before we affirm.
Okay.
Because I, I had some comments I wanted to make. This is the environmentally-conscious one?
Correct.
Okay, I just, I gave away my copy.
Deliberation comes before the motion.
Okay, so, there were a lot of discussion and during the, the hearings about the impact to the environment, and there are, there definitely will be tree cutting, there will definitely be disruption to habitat, and I believe, while this finding is a true statement, the applicant has proposed mitigants.
I know, I know.
And.
Thank you very much.
That, the, the fact that any development in this area would have the same impacts that we, given the Mass General law, that we would need to, while, while we can affirm this finding, it doesn't disqualify the project, which we can vote on when we get to the end. That's sort of my deliberation, that I believe it does not comport with what we were trying to accomplish with protecting the ecology and the environment of the area, and I think that's a true statement, but I don't think it necessarily disqualifies the application. So, we can now move to affirm this finding, or not affirm it. Does that make sense? It's gonna be affirming and negative. This is a finding that they don't completely conform to the bylaw. Make sense? I wrote this sort of as a negative. And if you read all the bylaws about tree cutting and minimizing impact, there's an argument to be made that it is disruptive to the environment and the ecology, and may not comport entirely to the intent of the bylaw.
So, is that not a subjective?
I, you're correct, I, I think you didn't read your discussion about facts and affirmations, so.
Right, which I have.
So, you're right, there, there is no substantiated measurable evidence that was presented about those impacts. So, you're right, it is a subjective statement that I made, and much of the testimony was subjective, although there was.
There was many negative statements made about the impact.
Right, but there was only one document that was provided that had some measurable things, and I'm not sure that that document actually made the cutoff for the closing the public hearing. So, if we think that the subj, so, i-if you could just read your statement, if we think this is not substantiated by the evidence, we can deny this finding, which would mean that it does comport with the intent of the bylaw, because there was no substantiated evidence. It's, it's a certain.
Do it, do it again, Carl.
But that, that doesn't make a ton of sense to me.
Okay.
That, that it's not a fact is one thing, but what, I don't necessarily want to vote one way or the other, because I don't necessarily think it's not true, I don't necessarily think it's true, but it's not, it's not a fact, so that's where I'm struggling. Is there gonna be a place where that can be asserted or not asserted that is not factual?
You, you, if we could take a pause, Ms. Moran did some prep work in anticipation of this question. She can read her opinion, is that correct, my parliamentarian? She's not voting, she's going to provide comment on fact of law, and finding a fact and something of law, what?
She's just reading it.
I, I believe that, and I just, by the way, found the reference of Robert Tools.
Thank you.
To people who can't vote.
Sure. Just going to a mic.
Sherry Quirk, answering a question from the, the chair. The question was whether Ms. Moran, although she cannot vote, can provide information and opinion on underlying matters, and I think the answer is yes, that although Robert's Rules does say that someone who can't vote cannot make motions, I think there is not any such restriction on offering opinion.
Okay.
And again, this isn't, I've been saying necessarily an opinion, but what I want to say is, I think I speak on behalf of the planning board, that we very much appreciate at all times comments from both pro and con, from our public, our citizens. Every, all of, everyone who, who sits in the audience and listens, is engaged, cares for the community, and we very much appreciate that. At the same time, I just want to remind everyone that, that this is an adjudicatory process, the planning board proceedings are an adjudicatory process. In our case, it's a public hearing at which evidence is presented, witnesses may testify, sometimes under oath, as we've seen, and witness can be questioned, decisions are made solely on the record of the proceedings. And, just to, to expand on that, facts outside the record cannot be used, and stated objections must be substantiated and based on substantial evidence that is then placed in the record. A reason, a particular opponent to a proposed project gives, when they give generalized and speculative community objections that are uncorroborated by imperial data, those just cannot be accepted as part of the record. If you have a contention or believe there are negative impacts that will arise, you must provide evidence to support that. Otherwise, we risk a court setting aside a decision if we were to, if we were to make our findings and decision based on unsubstantiated evidence. What examples can I give of that? Expert witnesses who can be questioned is an example of, of establishing a record and supporting a statement that you may be making, or an opinion you may share. Opinion letters of attorneys, which we've seen, other professionals who may have published articles, reports on the issue that you are raising, published reports of experts or studies conducted by known experts. These are the type of thing that we ask and we can use in our deliberations and our decisions. So, that is, general information that is taken from the internet, from something you may have seen, is, is a challenge, because it cannot be accepted as part of the record upon which we can use to support a decision that makes sense to everyone, so. But again, we absolutely want to hear from members of the community regardless, but what we wanted to try to explain is what that means about establishing a record, because you are, each one of you are heard, when you appear before us, we listen, we take notes, we absorb what you say, and if you don't, if you don't see it in a statement of finding or decision, it may very well be that we did not have the corroborating evidence that we could use to support that as a fact, so, with that.
Okay, thank you. So, and, and the other thing, just to amplify, expert testimony needs to be project-specific. We need to be able to apply it to the conditions of this applicant. So, to, back to Ms. Gleason's question, we need to make a finding, because the bylaws have general discussion of sustainable, client-sensitive, and environmentally-conscious design. We have several bylaws in, in Section 590 and in other articles, so, the, the finding that says it does not completely comport, we can strike that sentence, and then you have a proposed binding relative, we can, we can say, because we don't have any measurable evidence that it doesn't comport to that, that we have to make a finding that it is, or we can strike this finding completely and be silent on the matter, although there is a lot, there was quite a bit of discussion, and, I think, in, in the bylaws, we make, we need to make a finding on.
Well, the thing that's troubling is that we do need to make subjective judgments about things that come before us. We need to determine whether things like what's in the, in the.
The record? Is that what you're trying to reach for?
In the bylaw.
Oh, in the bylaw, okay.
Things that are in the bylaw, we need to determine whether what's brought before us measures up to that requirement.
So.
So that's, that's a subj, that can be very subjective, it, some of it's not measurable or weighable, or, so.
And, and so what I drafted, I went, I went too far in drafting it by making a statement, and I apologize for that.
No, no, you, that's fine, we're still, we're feeling our way through this, I have no problem with that. What, what I'm concerned about is, where is it appropriate? Because our subjective weighing and, and consideration of applicability of what's in the bylaw is not factual, so it does not fall into these findings of fact. So, where do they?
Though, I think the answer to that is, if we make a subjective finding, if, on any one of these, and, and ultimately, an individual finding in and of itself isn't, isn't problematic, but if, on appeal, the court finds that the basis for our, for our ultimate finding is weakened by subjective findings, that, that would be dealt with in the court on appeal.
Right.
And, and often in the past, we've made subjective findings.
But I don't, I don't know how we avoid subjective findings.
I, we, we try to do it by having better evidence on the record, or remaining silent.
But I think we need to find a place where those are, those can be.
The places, you could put it here, we, we can make any finding we want, the, the, the drive to having it supported by evidence is mine.
I guess the, I guess the thing that I'm still troubled by is that, whether I agree with this statement or not, I don't find it factual.
Which, the second half.
Yes, so I find that hard to vote on affirming it as a finding of fact.
Well, you would then deny it, that's how you would deal with that feeling. If, not changing any wording, taking what you said, and the way I wrote it in our deliberation document, I stated that it doesn't comport.
Right. Regardless of whether I agree with it or disagree with it.
Well, that's the way I wrote it, but then, you would then deny that finding of fact if you believe it's a misstatement.
But we can't be silent on it either.
No, we can't.
We shouldn't be.
No, we need to, we need to, that's part of our, our.
Exactly.
Judgment on this issue.
So, the answer is, we could either deny that finding of fact, or change the wording to say it is environmentally conscious, or we could go further and say there was no measurable, I mean, we could get wordy and say we, we could not find in the record measurable.
Criteria.
Evidence or criteria that said it wasn't. It's can, I don't know.
Was or wasn't.
Either way, you could, you could go.
Well, I would even say was or wasn't. It, it means that we've looked at that, and we find nothing specifically factual regarding that.
Measurable, certainly nothing measurable.
Right. Regarding.
So, request for input or advice from the planning office? Is Mr. Bowen, did Mr. Bowen come tonight or not? He did not.
Ken Buckley was on.
Okay, I, I did invite a turdy Bowen for that reason, to help us on these matters, but.
I really don't mean to be splitting hairs here.
No, no, that's why we're deliberating, and I want, it's helpful for some members of the public to see what we struggle with.
Yeah.
Ken, do you have advice?
I think what you can do is consider that there's, there's general statements that come with findings of fact later on. You've, you've set the stage for confirmation that there is something that's not environmentally correct in, in the application or the proposal, and later on, you go into some more detail about why and wherefore.
So, there are statements about the, the impact of the habitat, the, the animals, the corridors, the cumulative impact, do we just strike this one finding and deal with it in the other findings?
Well, I think you can leave that one in, if you agree that there is, that the proposed design on its own is not environmentally conscious, and later on, have, have the detail that specifies why you believe that, the findings of fact that, that support that, that generalization.
You're right, this is a generalization.
Yeah.
What I tried to do was summarize.
Yeah, well, and I, sure, and appreciate that, if we can synthesize this into a shorter document, that would be lovely for all of us, but I, I think that this one, and maybe if it came later in the document, so that we've got the supporting statements that make this make sense, then I might agree with it, but at the moment, I mean, I've read the whole thing for sure, I've cut notes all through.
I, and I didn't necessarily elaborate all the findings, there were definitely submissions from citizens, and, and they're not measurable or evidence, but impact on native species in the habitat.
Yeah.
The box turtle, the red something or other, the loons.
Water quality.
Well, and water, so general comments that were made, that, that I couldn't, I couldn't find measurable impacts.
Yeah, evidence.
But, so I just summarized it with this statement, and. But, so I just summarized it with this statement, and we can, we can either affirm or deny that summary, that broad-reaching summary based on the testimony that we heard, but later on, if we can substantiate the findings where there's measurable, I couldn't really find a lot of measurable, like, impact to water quality. There's a lot of concerns, example raised, but I couldn't find measurable evidence where it could be measured.
Before...
Or be certain. There's certainly a fear that there may be an impact, but there was no, I couldn't find evidence that said, in this project, at this specific location, it's for sure there will be an impact.
So where do we take this?
So we can make a motion to affirm, affirm this as written or deny it as written, and then move on. I mean, we can continue to deliberate, or we...
The question, I guess the question is, can you also, can you refer to that there'll be further described? You had this statement, and then it further described.
Can we pass on one and come back to it?
We can, we can leave it open and then...
Or is that stupid?
We can't be silent on it.
No, we can't be silent.
We have to bring it up.
Yeah.
Do you want to come back to number five then? The order that I wrote these in is...
Yeah, yeah, can move, right.
Yeah, and I was sort of, ultimately, we probably should reorganize them the way the bylaws are organized, which is what we have done in the past. What would you like to do? We could pass on this one and come back on number five.
Yeah, let's keep going and come back to this. And I think we're gonna have to come back to six as well.
Well, because it's the same thing, and I would have made the same statement.
Yeah.
So let's skip on to seven.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry to do that.
Okay, so just, can you keep a note that we have to come back to five and six?
Yep, I do.
Okay.
Did you get a new one?
Okay, on the new document that Josh gave us, what page are we on?
Page six.
Okay.
Okay.
Seven, remember seven, correct. Ecosystem function, we all said. Based on the most recent maps published by the Natural Heritage Endangered Species Program, map date August 2021, this site is not located within an area mapped as either priority habitats of rare species or estimated habitats of rare wildlife.
Make a motion to affirm the item as read by Ms. Moran.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye.
Okay, number eight, protection of surface and groundwater quality. The coating of the panels, the anti-reflective and the hydrophoric coatings and their constituent chemistry pose a potential risk to the groundwater, which is the source of drinking water for wells in the area.
Read the second, that's all one.
Sure. No, PFAS, polyfluorescent substances, otherwise known as PFAS, are claimed to be used in the manufacture of the proposed solar panels. Other substances used in the making of the panels could become hazardous if they enter the environment in an active form.
I make a motion to affirm the statement as read by Ms. Moran.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye.
Okay. Social equity, diversity, public health, or community needs and impacts. The project helps address the Commonwealth's goal of transitioning to resilient renewable energy sources by 2050 by providing a source of renewable energy as well as the town's sustainability goals.
I make a motion to affirm the item as read by Ms. Moran.
Sam, you in a second, or you have a question? Discussion, do you need discussion?
I don't agree with it.
What does help, you don't agree that it helps address the Commonwealth's goal of transitioning?
I agree with that, I don't, I don't agree with the date.
Well, that's what the state has published, that's their date, that's not our date.
Okay, I will second that.
Wait, just a clarification from Josh, Ken. The state had, under the Baker regime, they, they created...
Their statement of...
That was their, I wrote that as a fact.
Okay.
That was their goal, and this project contributes to that goal.
I'll second then.
That's, that's what this statement meant to me when I wrote it.
If that's a statement of fact, that's fine, I don't agree with it, but if that's a statement of fact, then I have a second.
So what you're saying you don't agree with is the state's goal? Is that what you didn't agree with?
Timeline of the state's goal, I think, is what he disagrees with.
Okay, yeah.
He doesn't feel it could be accomplished.
That, that's a different...
If this is a statement of fact by the state, then I'm fine.
Right.
That's my understanding of what their goal is.
All right.
You need to second anything?
I did, twice.
Okay. All in favor?
Gonna lay for my hat and that one.
Aye.
Yeah, I'm not asking you to vote to say you think it's a good goal that the state...
Right, okay.
We're just voting that it's a fact.
That it's, the state did set this goal, and this project will contribute to that goal.
That's where I'm, I want to put aside the ones that are subjective, and for now.
Jane Gleason, aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Historic significance, number 10, there is no known historic significance to the property.
In the record, I did not find anything that said there was historic significance to this property.
If nothing has been brought to us that indicates that there is historic significance, then I make a motion that item 10 be affirmed as read by Ms. Moran.
I agree, second.
Aye.
Aye.
Mike, if you have a problem, please, we're discussing to try and make sure we're all understanding.
The problem is, if we go back to the first one, here we go again, the state's jamming something on our throat. We have no protection to the state.
We, that...
State's not doing nothing for us, they don't care.
And that, we have places where we talk about that, but you're absolutely correct. We have to follow the law, or if we...
We could challenge the law.
And then it will end up being adjudicated. If we, that's the only thing I'm saying, as long as, we can, we can do what we do, but these are right now findings of fact, and that's, we're not deliberating yet on the implications of those facts. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, okay.
And I'm not asking with you to agree with the state's position or goals or...
Well, you know how I feel about that.
No, no, and I'm not asking you to change that, but I tried to write these as facts we could, we could understand. So, did you vote aye or no?
Yeah, I'll vote aye.
Okay, and Jane?
Aye.
And...
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Okay, number 11, Carl, impacts on public services and facilities.
And I would go further and say, there are no impacts on public services or facilities. So, this is a solar project, there's not going to be any impact on schools, there shouldn't be any impact on the road infrastructure, there shouldn't be any impact on sewer. So those were what I meant by public services, police. The impact on fire, there may be an impact on fire should there be an event, but that is not beyond any development project.
I agree with that.
So that's, so I think we could go, there is no, we could go, we didn't find that there were any significant impacts on public services and facilities.
We may, we may want to list those, so it was school...
I actually probably have a statement for that. School, there's no impact to schools.
Yeah.
Water, sewer.
No impact to water.
What if you say any public, what if you say any public safety or facilities? I'm rather than, listen, just, it's not going to affect any as a, as a project. After the fact, if there's a fire or if there's some police involvement, that's, it's not going to affect it.
Fire's, fire's an issue, and I would, I, can we speculate that water might be?
We do, we do have statements about fire later on in the document.
And water?
Which, water would be town water, not runoff. That wouldn't be a public runoff or things like that, it's not town-provided water.
It's not public water supply.
But affecting the public water supply is public.
But, public services.
Yeah.
Waters are not available up there.
Yeah.
So, public service.
We do, the item above that we passed on and items below talk about impact to water quality. So you...
I think I understand your concern, but I think it's okay, because it, public services, you can't anticipate a fire. I think it should, it's definitely a serious issue. I don't think this facility is going to affect the fire. Well, they could if it had one.
Sure.
The applicant's goal isn't to build a solar farm and then set it ablaze.
Say that again?
The applicant's goal isn't to create a solar facility and then light it on fire.
Right.
And that would be your argument, that it would cause some type of public service need in terms of fire? You know, ideally, they build this and it never catches on fire, and it's never a concern of anyone.
I agree, but we have read many stories of fires all over the world.
I think you would condition the mitigating factors of a fire in your conditions, not in the finding of a fact.
So the fires that we've been hearing about are related to BES, but...
And there is no battery in this.
Right, there's no, that's what I was just gonna say, there's no battery.
Solar panels don't catch on fire.
Yeah, where's the fire hazard here?
If they're struck by lightning, they're gonna burn.
Solar panels, I've never heard of that, but, okay.
We have read stories all over the world, aside from batteries, solar farms burning.
I don't remember that.
But would it, but does it...
A brush fire.
But does it, does it present a hazard that's higher than if it weren't, if the solar array were not there?
I would say yes.
There's, there's trees and...
Well, that general statement, I would say yes. I mean, versus, the way it is versus with it there, yeah, I think there's a better chance versus nothing.
All right, well, we have, we have to make a finding on impacts to public services and facilities.
I was all for it, I'm changing my mind as I'm speaking.
Oh, boy.
Okay, I wrote this as, I don't, I personally don't believe there are impact to public services and facilities defined as services the towns provide. I don't believe there's a substantial risk to fire or police from this project, to services provided, any more than any, see, part of the thing that I always keep in the back of my mind, we can do development on this property. This doesn't pose any greater risk to this, in fact, it poses less of a risk of some kinds of development that could happen on this property. If this was a housing subdivision.
I agree with...
I'm good.
Mike, you didn't, you didn't weigh in.
No.
This is what we struggle with, we have to, we have to ghetto, and believe me, this is an easy application.
And this is a hard one, because it's the first one.
Yeah.
I mean, we're having discussions now that we haven't had.
Right, and as you know, a lot of times, these things were, we didn't, we didn't get together and deliberate on these, a lot of times, we just voted up or down and didn't even talk about some of these things.
So you're looking for a vote for me?
Or if you kind of...
Go ahead.
Well, so, I'm, I make a...
We'll have to add some words.
I need to make a motion to affirm that impacts on public services and facilities will be, dare I say, inconsequential.
We have a statement that we usually use.
That's not, I'm not comfortable with that.
Hang on. Let me see if I have a statement. Is this what you get from me trying to do this? Um, let's go here. Mr. Buckland, do you have a statement? You've written one before, I'm trying to find one of your statements.
No significant impact.
No significant impact.
Say that again?
So, we would say...
No significant impact is what Carl said.
Would be the finding.
Okay, so I make a motion that there will be no significant impact on public services and facilities.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you.
Okay.
And, okay, so regarding the next one, I think the same statement, but we can discuss it. Go ahead, read it.
Number 12, noise, noise will be generated by the transformers and inverters.
There will be noise generated, that's a finding of fact, but I think the impact...
That's...
Because of where this is located, the impact, it's in, it's in the middle of the property, there are no proximate houses.
No significant...
Oh, wait, actually, I need to take this out. I said transformers and inverter, they remove the battery ESS. Are there still transformers and inverters? There probably are, yes, there's still, yeah, there's transformers, never mind. I took the stuff out about the battery ESS. But there will be noise, these things generate noise, but where this is located, it's in, as you and I walk the property, it's not near it.
Now I look back at the one we just voted on, and to say no significant, I mean, that's not, that's subjective.
You could, you could, we need to make a finding.
Yeah.
But isn't it a fact that noise will be generated?
Yes, noise will be generated.
Yeah.
Yep, okay, so I make a motion that we affirm item 12 as read by Ms. Moran.
Second.
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. The next one should be easy.
Thirteen, signage, no signage, other than site informational signage is proposed. The board finds the informational signage sufficient.
There's not going to be signs anywhere, there's not going to be, other than, you know, on the cooperative itself.
I would, I would make a suggestion that we take out, the board finds the informational signage sufficient. I would say no signage other than the required site informational signage is proposed, that's factual.
They aren't, yes, they aren't proposing any other signage.
Any other signage, right. They're proposing what's required.
So you're proposing a change?
Yeah.
Let me read it back, Jane, just to make sure.
Yeah.
So I think what you're saying is, number 13, signage, no signage other than required site informational signage is proposed.
Correct.
Okay.
That's your motion?
Second.
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye.
So that eliminates that sentence, the board finds the informational signage sufficient.
It's not a finding, that, that's part of what it means to us, but...
Yeah, right. But that's not part of the finding.
Okay. All right, the next one I left a finding in, I think the word, the board finds out, just say...
The plans. So we'll read 14, safety, the plans revised through May 28, 2004, including the conditions of approval required herein provide sufficient safety protection.
I make a motion that item 14 as read by Ms. Moran be affirmed.
Second.
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. I don't, I don't see any other safety concerns, other than the fence and wall conditions, yeah, we've got conditions, so.
We met all that, right.
All right.
Okay.
Don't get rid of the, I thought I took all those out, just the, don't read the words, the planning board finds.
Yeah.
I thought I took all those out, because we didn't find it yet.
Okay. Number 15, potential adverse effects on development. The cumulative impact of solar development, do you, should that be solar development?
No, no, I wrote this as, this is the cumulative impact discussion that we've had.
Okay. The cumulative impact of development in the area where clusters of major side-by-side projects threaten forest lands, cut off wildlife corridors, disrupt the natural flows of water... The cum, the cumulative impact of development in the area where clusters of major side-by-side projects threaten forest lands, cut off wildlife corridors, disrupt the natural flows of water, and threaten animal habitat are detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens.
That's a proposed finding of fact for the area, now, we don't have a bylaw that deals with this, but it doesn't change the fact that this is a fact. Or my, my contention that it's a fact.
I agree with that.
Now, when we come to making a decision, if we were to say we deny because section 123 of the bylaw says, that's a different, a different thing, but this is, I am saying this is a binding fact.
I make a motion that item 15 as read by Ms. Moran be affirmed.
Second. Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye.
Okay. 16, purpose and intent of solar energy systems, the project as shown on the plans, project plans dated May 28, 2024 do not fully comply with the purpose and intent of the Wareham Solar Energy Systems zoning bylaw or Article 12 performance standards, because it does not minimize environmental impact, does not protect scenic and natural resources or wildlife corridors. The conditions below will sufficiently meet the purpose and construction-related conditions and additional intent of this bylaw.
That was my annotation, we're, we're putting conditions on it, but that's, the finding of fact is the first part, I do wanna make a note. I, I referenced Article 12, because that's where the performance standards are, in this version of bylaws, Article 12, this, this project is exempt from Article 12 under 1216.9, so we may wanna strike that.
I think that sounds like we have to.
Yeah.
It's not applicable.
Article 12 can't be applied to.
To this project.
Special permits is. Can be applied to site plans.
Which was then fixed.
We, we fixed that in October, but, but technically, I'm not sure that we can't apply it to the site plan. Remember, we're doing a site plan review, which is not an approve or deny. Special permit is approved or denied.
Or denied, right. Yeah, site plan review is, here are the conditions.
I just wanted, as we dug through this, we can't, we can't apply this to the special permit, we can use it to shape the site plan portion of our approval. But we can't deny a site plan.
Right, we can condition it.
Right, which is why I left it sort of in there, and then I wrote a note, which is, there's a lot of conditions below, which I think.
That applies to.
We're, we're trying to mitigate that. So, do you wanna strike the reference to Article 12, just, just or Article 12 performance standards and leave in because it does not minimize environmental impact, does not protect scenic and natural resources or wildlife corridors?
You just keep it performance standards? Generally reference that?
So period after performance standards?
Where, where is performance standards, hang on. I don't see where you, where you wanna put the period.
Right here.
I just wanted to strike or Article 12.
Oh, you wanna take the whole thing, not Article, performance standards, period, what, what was there before the change?
Just change or Article 12.
Okay.
Do you wanna reread that, Julie?
Yes. Purpose and intent of solar energy systems, the project as shown, the project plans dated May 28, 2024, do not fully comply with the purpose and intent of the Wareham Solar Energy System.
Oh, excuse me, Article 12, performance standards is the, the heading for Article 12, so strike that, words too.
The words, right, that's what I'm doing. Comply with the purpose and intent of the Wareham Solar Energy Systems zoning bylaw or Article 12, period.
No, get rid of or Article 12.
Okay.
Say bylaw because.
The intent of Wareham Solar Energy System zoning bylaw, because.
Because it does not.
Okay, I apologize.
No, no, it's.
Okay, 16, purpose and intent of solar entry systems, the project as shown in the project plans dated May 28, 2024, do not fully comply with the purpose and intent of the Wareham Solar Energy Systems zoning bylaw, because it does not minimize environmental impact, does not protect scenic and natural resources or wildlife corridors.
This goes into, this is another one of your subjective, I took the body of testimony and, and synthesized it down to that, but it is subjective, I have no measurable, um, assessment of that.
I think even that's, that opinion is subjective, because I could say, that you could point to the drawings and say, this, that, the other thing, and that's factual.
Okay, but that's why we're deliber, that's. That's why we're deliber, oh, you think it's factual, but it does.
I, I think this is not an incorrect statement.
That's, okay.
And I think factually, it's not an incorrect statement.
It certainly, it's not, the intent of the project is not to minimize environmental, well, the design.
Well, it is, because it's generating power without belching smoke into the environment, so yes, in that regard, yes, but in the, the regards that you've listed, I would say factually not the case.
Okay. Are you gonna?
Um, yeah, all right, I make, sorry, make a motion to affirm item 16 as read the most recent time by Julie Moran.
Second. Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. I, editorial comment, the state has not made this easy for us.
No, no.
With the guidelines.
No.
State doesn't make anything easy for us, do they?
It's not there.
And there's nothing wrong with saying no.
Well, we didn't, that's, don't.
We're not there yet.
We gotta.
I know.
This is us deliberating on what we think is in front of us.
Oh, to the state, yeah. Okay, may I proceed?
This one should be easy.
17, batteries, no batteries for electrical storage are proposed.
That's pretty clear.
I'd say that's fact, I make a motion that we affirm the statement as read by Ms. Moran, item 17.
Second. Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye.
18, the application comports with the citing and filing requir, comports with the citing and filing requirements of zoning bylaws of the town of Wareham, April 2023, as amended, section 1551, relation to Conservation Commission approvals. A notice of intent, it was, an OI was filed with the Wareham Conservation Commission for a proposed in jurisdictional areas and order of conditions was issued for the work.
That's a fact, I make a motion that we affirm item 18 as read by Ms. Moran.
Second. Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye.
Okay. 19, the application comports with the citing and filing requirements of zoning bylaws of the town of Wareham, April 2023, as amended, section 1543, vehicular circulation, the plan provides access across roads and driveway, ac, sorry, the plan provides access roads and driveways designed to limit visibility into the site, with whom disturbance necessary to gain appropriate access to and around the arrays. Setback shall not be disturbed by access roads, except where allowed by the permit granting authority for access to the site. The proposed project provides a 20-foot wide gravel driveway as the access road from.
County road.
County road to the solar arrays, the project site is not open to the public, once the solar array is constructed and operational, the site will only be accessed for maintenance and inspections.
I make a motion to affirm item 19 as read by Ms. Moran.
Second. Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye.
The app, number 20, the application comports with the citing and filing requirements of zoning bylaws of the town of Wareham, April 2023, as amended, section 1565.2, reviewed by town officials, June 5, 2024, letter from Captain Smith indicating that the plan provides access roads and driveways that meet the requirements of the Wareham Fire Department.
Jane, keep going.
Yep. With the exception of the Conservation Commission, no other town boards offered comment.
I make a motion that we affirm item 20 as read by Ms. Moran.
Second. Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye.
21, the application comports with the citing and filing requirements of zoning bylaws of the town of Wareham, April 2023, as amended, section 593, application of a site plan review. Application of a site plan review with special permit shall require the filing of a site plan review with special permit application and site plan in accordance with Article 15 of the Wareham zoning bylaw. No large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installation shall be approved or constructed until evidence has been given to the permit granting authority, that the utility company that operates the electrical grid where the insulation is to be located has been informed of the large, ground-mounted solar energy facilities owner or operator's intent to install an interconnected customer owner generator.
I think that's the finding, the rest is.
Yeah, just.
Comment, which we can discuss, so, the applicant provided proof that they have notified, the, the requirement is that they've notified the facility. And then I did add, and we can deal with this, we do know that the, the study group, DPU 2254, the findings for the N-Star Electric Company for approval with the Department of Public Utilities, that this project will not be, we can't have a firm date for interconnect, and it could be as much as four years, that's, that's just a note, but they did meet the requirement to notify the public utility. We, later on, we talk about conditions around the fact that it's gonna take them a lot of time to build it.
Okay, uh, that makes sense to me, I make a motion that item 21 is affirmed as read by Ms. Moran.
Second. Aye.
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 The chair votes aye, and then I did propose some mitigants and conditions, which when we get there. That, that they have, they will have to come back, if they, they're, they're still gonna be subject to the two-year.
Right.
Requirement under site plan and special permit, they'll have to come back for an exception. Now, the state can require us to extend special permits, they can't require us around site plan, so we can come back and we can deliberate on site plan. So, the applicant will have to come back, and that will be a condition, it's a condition of bylaws, they'll have to come back for an extension, now, for the special permit, likely the law says we're gonna have to grant them that extension, but that doesn't mean we can't discuss with them at that time, changes to the, to the site plan. It, it doesn't mean we have to, it's just, I think that if we parse the law, this is a case of, Mike, where maybe we can drive a minibus through the state law and still have some town influence. I'm, I'm not a lawyer, and I haven't discussed this with a lawyer, but they can't regulate site plan because the state is silent on site plan. Except saying we can't have a site plan. But that's for the future, clearly, they, we're gonna condition it that they have to come back for the extension. Or I, I recommend that we condition, the, the bylaw says they have to come back.
Right, before the, before the permit expires.
That's, that's, that's not what we're voting on, we're voting on a finding of fact.
Right, right.
Right, right, yes.
That's my deliberation.
So, item 22.
Okay, 22, safety, circulation, connectivity that is safe and accessible for all, 1543 vehicular circulation, Richard Fielding owns a property known as Accessors Map 63 Lot 1018, and Accessors Map 72 Lots 1011 and 1012. Richard Fielding alleges that he's currently utilizing an existing right of way at 362 County Road to access his property, he asserts deed of rights to continue to use existing rights of way to access his properties, he believes that the approval of this project would interfere with access to his land. The board finds that the issue of deed at access is a matter for the court between the parties, is not within the scope of our discussion, sorry, of our decision.
I make a motion that we affirm the item 22 in its entirety as read by Ms. Moran.
And further, that this be a matter of.
Yeah, to reiterate the, the final sentence of what Ms. Moran read, the board finds the issue of deed at access is, is a matter for the court between the parties and is not in scope for our decision.
Yeah, so that, I think, is also part of the finding of fact.
Yes, so.
Second. Aye.
Aye.
Sam?
Second.
You're gonna get the aye.
Aye.
And the chair, the chair votes aye, yeah, it's not appropriate for the board to act on that matter, I don't think, we'll be seeing for the next one, I think.
Same with 23, I think it's really just that one sentence.
Can you, can you, can you move your mic farther to that way, because you're speaking more towards Jane. Not, not that.
Carl. My thought is this, do we need to read all this?
Don't, don't read this, just.
That.
That statement, this is.
Yeah, that's right, okay, number 23, ancient ways, the applicant provided historical context about the law and the requirements and status, the applicant, of the, and status of the applicant's position that there, that these no longer apply, and states, I think, yeah, status, I think it states the applicant's position, correct?
Right, yes.
That these no longer apply.
That's a finding, that's, that's the fact, and then I think we want to. Add, amend that by saying that, just like we did with the last one, that this is a matter for the court. The board finds, rather we say the board finds, the, the fact is, we, this is an issue, the board finds that the issue of ancient ways is a matter for the court between the parties, and it's not in scope for our decision. So, let, you wanna reread, the applicant provided historical context.
Yep, the applicant provided historical context about the law and the requirement, and states the applicant's position that there, that these no longer apply, the board finds that the issue of deed at access is a matter for the.
No, the, the issue of ancient ways.
Oh, okay, sorry, ancient ways, which is deed at access, okay, it, sorry.
Oh, is that, oh, that is.
That's fine, the board finds that.
As, as a real estate attorney, you're keeping us honest.
The board finds that the issue of, we'll ta, we'll say ancient ways, is a matter for the court between the parties, it's not in scope of our, for our discussion, it's really deed at access over an ancient way, but anyway, okay.
I make a motion that we affirm item 23 as read by Ms. Moran.
Second. Aye.
Aye.
You have to vote, and the chair votes aye.
Chair votes aye, okay. 24, 1532.1, existing natural features, a professional forester was retained to identify trees that have an 18-inch diameter at breast height, 4.5 feet above ground, professional forester conducted an assessment of the two existing white pine forest areas that are proposed to be cleared, he laid out two 10-foot, 100-foot by 100-foot square quadrants in the 2.53 acre proposed smaller array area, and three 100-foot by 100-foot quadrants in the 7.15 acre proposed larger array area. These areas total 1.15 acres, which is 12% of the area proposed to be cleared, a total of 16 trees were found to be 18 inches in diameter or larger in those five quart, quadrants, it is thus estimated there are 130, 135 trees 18 inches in diameter or larger in the total area to be cleared with an estimated value of $2,900.
I make a motion to affirm item 24 as read by Ms. Moran.
Second. Aye.
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 Oh, and the chair votes aye.
25, noise and vibration, i.e., not detectable without instruments at more than 200 feet from the boundaries of the property, not detectable after 10:00 PM.
Okay, and now, just, I, we don't have anything in the evidence to say that it's not detectable for more than, I was working on that, so, we could say.
That's pretty much a statement from the bylaw.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the statement from the bylaws, I, I, we either accept that, I don't think that 200, if we stood in the array, 200 feet from the array, there's, it's completely surrounded by, nobody's gonna hear it, 200 feet from the array, there's nobody there to hear it.
That is not a fact.
It's a fact as the property sits now, and right now, Ms., why did her name go out? Zimmer, it's not Harzou, her, Ms. Zimmer, we've walked the property, 200 feet around these areas is still her property. And 200 feet beyond that is still her property, eventually we'll hit another solar array, or we'll hit the backside of Mr. Churchill's.
Development?
Well, it's, but it's the area that's not developed.
Right.
And I don't know how far we have to walk to get to somebody on Squirrel Island Road.
So is it truly not detectable when it's 10:00 PM and dark and very still?
That you could, I don't, I don't know, we don't have, we didn't take measurements, and we didn't require the applicant to submit measurements.
And can that really be a finding of fact?
I don't know.
But we could be silent on it, we don't know, we can't state it as a fact.
Right.
Yeah, I think we can't, yeah, I think we can't.
So we can deny this, that's what I say, I wa, I was trying to write the, the bylaws down, and we have to, so we deliberated on it.
So, I'm gonna make a motion that we affirm item 25 as read by Ms. Moran, and then I'm gonna vote.
You know, you can make a motion to. You know, you can make a motion to deny. We don't have to affirm.
Not affirm.
Well, we could just vote it down. We can just
Either, either, they both have the same, they both have the same
But rather than
Okay.
Make a motion of something she didn't say.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to affirm, uh, the item 25 as read by Ms. Moran.
And then, your recommendation is to vote no.
No, yeah.
You can't, you can't, no.
No.
You want to, we can't support that statement, so if you don't want to support the statement, you would vote, this would be the one time you get to vote no on a finding of fact.
Mr. Chair, can I bring up a comment?
Sure.
Before you get there?
Please.
I, I have been on a limited number of solar sites, and I'm not sure that the sound they create, I, I'm not sure of the sound they create. Uh, I'm thinking maybe Mr. Cudaro has been on enough solar fields to say whether they generate, no.
So, I could tell you the only application, we're not taking comments from the, we, no, please do not, please.
Three years ago, and there's two types of
Please, please, please do not, that was not presented in this application, and you didn't listen to where I was going. You can get a mo, there's no audience input. The public hearing is
Audience input three years ago, and you guys have thrown it out.
Please.
This town is ridiculous.
Now, to complete answering your question, the only solar application where we discussed in depth, the, um, noise impact was the, the application she was talking about.
Sure.
And we never concluded that hearing or conditions or findings of fact. There was no evidence presented in this case about noise conditions, and we did not ask the applicant for a noise study because of, in my opinion, I didn't ask for it because of the location.
Understood. Thank you.
I agree. I think we should just be silent on it.
We can be silent on all, I can withdraw the, the motion.
And we could strike this finding. We do have a noise finding earlier, which, that they do generate some level of noise, but we didn't, we didn't make any statement about its impact. So, we can, we can not, so I, we, I would accept a motion that we strike this finding.
Second.
Aye.
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 Okay.
Okay, 26, stormwater retention, meeting the state's stormwater pollution prevention guidelines. Stormwater management system reviewed and found acceptable by the town's consulting engineers.
It, it says meeting. The, the requirement is that it meets the state's stormwater, and we have a report from our consulting engineer that it does.
I make a motion that we affirm item 26 as read by Ms. Moran.
Second.
Aye.
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 Chair?
Oh, aye.
Twenty-seven, fencing for security to blend into the landscape.
There, there is a bylaw under section 590 that it has to have fencing. I think the finding is the fencing is not specifically designed to blend into the landscape.
Correct. Let me read that, so I'll read the whole thing. Fencing is not specifically designed to blend into landscape. So, those are the two sentences.
Right, that's, that's the finding.
Say that again.
Read it again.
The
Fencing for security to blend into the landscape. Fencing is not specifically designed to blend into the landscape.
Right, the requirement is that there's, there's fencing.
Okay.
So, I didn't, I didn't cite the bylaw reference, but
Here's where, as making the motion, I get to have some discretion.
Sure.
I make a motion to strike item 27 as read by Ms. Moran.
Okay, and the reason being?
That I think it's subjective, whether or not it fits into the landscape.
Okay, I, I, but that's not what it says. It says it's not specifically designed to fit into the landscape. It's standard fencing. They're what, they didn't do anything to Yeah, that's the deliberation. I, I can go either way. I don't think fencing is a decision breaker on this
No, I don't think so either. I don't think so either.
So, we can strike this one. It doesn't have to be a finding of fact.
Just as a little aside, if somebody puts up black chain link fencing, which is off the shelf, it's not specifically intended to blend with the landscape, it blends with the landscape and you can't see it. So
Yeah, I, I'll defer to your
So, that's where I think that it's
Not, not a, not a good finding.
I don't think that it is necessarily factual. But I'm not going to get a second on it.
Say it again, John.
So, her motion is to strike
To strike this item as read, because I think it's subjective.
That's your motion?
Mm-hmm.
Second.
Aye.
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 The chair votes aye. I, it's, fencing is important in some cases and not, I don't think it's important in this particular site, but there has to be fencing.
Right, and I think they've met that requirement, so
Yes, okay.
Okay, 28, operation maintenance plan, an O and M plan has been submitted. I think, Carl, you're saying operation and maintenance plan is required.
Is the requirement. There is a bylaw in section 590 that says, I just didn't
Has it been submitted, or is it
It was part of the package.
Yeah.
How did I miss that? Okay.
Um, is that a statement of, did I get it wrong? Excuse me, a question for Phil. There wasn't operations and maintenance plan.
Okay.
That's what I did think.
Uh, I make a motion that item 28 be affirmed as read by Ms. Moran.
Second.
Uh, okay. I have, um, when we get to the end, I want to propose another finding. Can I propose it now because it relates this? Um, a solar decommissioning plan is required under section 590, and I think the finding is a solar decommissioning plan was submitted. We talk about conditions later about the solar decommissioning, but that's correct also. Is that right, Mr. Cudaro? There was a solar decommissioning plan? He nodded.
Yeah, okay.
It was, it was submitted, so that's a finding of fact.
So, you want that as a
Yeah, I want to add one, a, the requirement is that a decommissioning plan
Is that item 32, or are you adding that to item
It could be item 32, if you want.
Let's do it as item 32.
Okay, let, we'll wait till we get there.
Wait till we get there, okay.
So
Should we wait till we get there?
Yeah.
I'll make the motion when we get there, then.
Item 28, we've, did I make a motion?
Yeah, we, we voted on that. That was, yeah, there is an operations plan, and we, we affirmed that finding of fact.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, 29, lighting shall be consistent with state and federal law. No lighting is proposed. And again, I think, under, this is a bylaw.
The, yeah, the, the requirement was, it, the way I had been doing it is bolding them and putting a colon, and I just ran out of oomph.
Ran out of colons?
So, the finding is there's no lighting proposed. The requirement is that it has to comply. There isn't, the finding is there's no lighting proposed.
Um, I make a motion that item 29 be affirmed as, uh, read by Ms. Moran.
Second.
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye.
Thirty, impact of the proposed project on all applicable town services, including limited to schools, sewer service, water system, parks, fire, and police protection.
This is a better writing of the, of the, of the one above.
And the one above we passed on?
No, we, no, we, uh
We affirmed it?
I, we discussed Mr. Buckland's recommendation, that the, the finding is there's no significant impact
Yeah, okay.
On applicable town services.
Services and facilities. So, do we want to
Number 11, which we concluded, right?
Yeah, this may just be a better, we, I suggest we combine 11 and 30 into one finding.
I make a motion that items 11 and 30 be combined into one
And affirmed.
One finding and affirmed.
Has no significant impact on.
Second.
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Patty, I hope you could keep up with us on our motions. She's, she's, she may not even be on. She's gonna, she's gotta write the minutes.
Okay, 31, impact of the proposed project on the ecology of the area within the site and any significant off-site impact.
And this was another one of those, that's a requirement that we need to make a finding, and I struggled with broadly stated, there are many concerns about the impact on the ecology. Um, there was a lot of testimony, um, there, there will be an impact on the ecology of the area. Um, and off-site impacts would be the discussion of runoff into Cohasset Brook and further downstream, but I couldn't come up with a statement of what that impact was. I, I couldn't draft one, so we need to
Blanket statement of
Discuss it, but
I said, we need something, though.
Well, the finding could be, excuse me, I don't have a drink. Oh, I do have a drink. That, the project will certainly have an impact on the area, and there are potentials for off-site impacts, but the significance, I think the finding is we, we can't, um, I can't, I have, but we have to vote as a we. I don't know that we can measure the impact of those, there, there's, any development will have an impact on an area.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know, and there are concerns about runoff and, and downstream impacts, but I don't know that, that it's going to be measurable or significant.
But there will be impact.
There will, any development, I, no, no, I agree with, I'm, I'm agreeing with her. Any project will have an impact. It could be a positive impact. I mean, the wildflower meadow could actually, it turned out to be a better habitat than this, um, forest, but we, I don't know that we know that. There were proposed impacts to the bees, um, but a wildflower meadow may actually be positive for bees. I, the problem is, there was a lot of discussion about the impact, but I don't know how to assess that impact, and I don't know how to make a finding on that impact.
Would reconsider the gentleman for the bees an expert?
Not on this project. He talked about bees and forests in general, but he, he, he did not present, and he actually He actually, um, he left, he left at the end of this project. He didn't stay for the next project, but, um, he didn't specifically assess the impact of changing the forest to wildflower meadow. Um,
I thought he talked about some specific
He talked about kinds of plants, and we had some testimony afterwards about plants, but those plants could be included in the wildflower meadow, and I think the applicant discussed those plants being in the wildflower meadow. So, in any case, there was a lot of discussion. I agree that there's going to be an impact, but I don't know how to assess, um, positive or negative. And I, I don't know that I
It could be both.
There could be both, so
Probably would be both.
So, that could be our finding. There, there certainly will be an impact. That could be the finding. There will be an impact. Whether it's significant or not, I don't know.
I agree with that statement that there is going to be impact. We don't know how significant it will be. But that's, I don't know what else to say, except there will be impact. We don't know
So, the finding could be the scope of that impact is, is unknown.
I agree.
Or
I don't know how to say it any other way that there will, except there will be.
So, the question
It could be positive, it could be negative, it could be significantly negative. We don't know that.
So, a question
To say there will be impact.
At this time.
A question to our advisors, either Mr. Cudaro or Mr. Farady, with your, how do you assess impact when you, how do you write statements of findings when you're assessing impact on the ecology?
You'd need something measurable.
And I
Either negative or positive.
So, what's an, not in this, maybe in this case, but what would be an example of something that you get that's measurable, so we can reach back? It has to be project-specific, right? Not general statements about solar and, you have an example? Mr. Cudaro, do you have an example of a measurable impact on?
No, it's, it's only, no, chairman. Mr. Chairman, I, I don't. It's, you need, you need a metric. Certainly, Josh is correct. You need something that you can quantify, and your statements about ecology are, would be a very hard metric to, to measure up.
Right, that, and that's one of the things that I think we struggle with in our bylaws, and we, I struggle, I personally struggle with on health, safety, and welfare. Our bylaws don't include metrics against which
Right.
Um, and, and so, to that sense, those, those findings, uh, will be subjective, even though we've had advice that the courts only accept
Hard
Hard, hard, yeah, hard evidence.
It's that same subjectivity comment that you've had throughout this.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So
Well, I think we can say that it will have an impact. You cut down trees, that's an impact. You
I agree.
Put up, put some new structure into an environment, that's an impact.
Yeah.
So, I, I don't, I think that that's factual, but
Within the site and off-site as well.
What's that?
It really would be in, on-site and off-site. I think we can
We could say that there will be an impact, but then
On both.
Right.
On both, but then when we go back, and depending on how we vote, if we rely on that impact, either being negative and say yes, or significant and say no, we have to understand that we haven't really substantiated that assessment of the impact.
Right. Yeah, like, what is the statement worth if
And it would, it would be important to try to tie that impact back to something that's identified as, you know, for example, um, an HESP gives you a list of endangered or protected species.
Boxed turtle.
Right. If their habitat is identified on the site and that is being impacted
But we already established that there were no
Right, right, but I'm just saying for an example.
You're giving an example.
No, but that, so I'm, I'm saying, so we, that's how we could tie the two together. Um, there, there certainly will be impact to animals that live there, but it's not identified on the map that we talked about earlier. Uh, and by the way, if you look at, um, the whole town of Wareham, the entire town is listed in some studies as habitat for box turtle, habitat for these other creatures, because we're a wetlands and we're, we're have habitually, not historically, that's the word I'm looking for, not habitually, historically, a, a rural, um, community that is changing. And our bylaws and the guidance from the state don't give us a lot of hard criteria to measure against, which is what we struggle with, even though we believe, even the
Yeah, the facts and our beliefs are completely different things.
Right.
This site in particular, you have a solar array already, this one, Fairing Hill, whether it moves on or not.
And we have a, a large housing development
Exactly.
And, and, and across the street is Rochester, which we have no control over, although when we talk about cumulative impact in the area, they could build a thousand home subdivision across the street, and we have, we have no influence on that. But that is the nature of our changing community. So, do we want to make a finding? There, we, the finding could be, there will be an in, thank you, Mr. Cudaro, um, there will be an impact. The, the scope of, we don't have, and we could stop there. There will be an impact. That is a fact.
Of the ecology on the proposed
Yeah.
Project site.
I'm just, I'm saying, on the ecology of the area, on-site and, both on-site and off-site.
Then it goes further to significant off-site impact. I don't know that we can find that there are
I struck significant.
No, that's the requirement. That's, that's No, that's the requirement. That's, that's the bylaw requirement.
Yeah.
So, do you want to read a statement again?
But it's not, it's not, doesn't reflect the bylaw, though. Impacts, impacts of the proposed project on the ecology of the area, both on the site and off-site, as you said.
So, the finding could be that there will be impacts...
I agree.
On...
There will be an impact or impact.
On, on the site, and there will be off-site impacts.
Correct.
The scale...
There will be ecological impacts.
On-site and off-site, but we don't have to use the word significant or...
Yeah, both on-site and off-site.
Right, so that would be the finding.
Or both on and off-site.
So, then when we come to do it, this body of findings then leads us to our deliberation on approval or denial.
Okay, so I make a motion that we affirm item thirty-one as most recently read by Ms. Moran.
Let me read it again. There will be ecological impacts on the proposed project on the site and off, both on the site and off-site.
By the project?
Yes.
Both on and off-site, okay.
Second.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
That's it.
The chair would like, and then any board members, the chair would like to propose a finding of fact that says, there's a requirement under section 590 for a decommissioning plan, and the finding is, the applicant submitted a decommissioning plan, and that's later referenced in conditions.
I have a solar decommissioning plan was submitted by, has been submitted by the applicant, or was submitted by the applicant.
And Mr. Cudaro acknowledged that, the applicant, not him.
You could say per section 590 of the bylaw.
Oh, yeah. Five ninety was the solar portion of the bylaw.
Yeah. I make a motion to affirm item thirty-two as read by Ms. Moran.
Second. Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Before, is there anything else anyone would like to offer as a finding of fact that we did not discuss?
No, we've got conditions, that's...
Yeah, we didn't, we're not going to talk about conditions yet.
Yeah, right. Nope, I, I'm good.
Is there any input from the planning office on findings of fact, or our deliberation? Did we screw something up, miss something?
We have to re-vote all of them.
We have, no, no, we have to go back. There's two that we didn't close on.
Five and six.
Five and six.
So, a project proponent would like to discuss, if you're taking input, the applicant of the project.
It's closed.
Not a hearing.
Richard Rayom here. I didn't know what the procedural process was for the discussion of some of the things you found, but when you said noise will be generated, we submitted specific computations in the report that were not contested. It showed that at the property line, there would be eighty-six ten thousandths of one decibel at the property line during the daytime, which is completely inaudible, and obviously, there's no sun at nighttime, so there's zero sound.
Thank you, thank you for that. When I went back through your document, I missed that. So, thank you, Will.
It's page five of the report, the body of the report. The, the other thing was on, I think it was on...
Wait, Mr., we're not deliberating, so thank you for clarifying that. Is this a clarification on a point that we've discussed, or...
Yes, I believe that was number twelve of your decisions, where you decided that noise will be generated, and I'm saying that there was no evidence that there would be any noise generated at the property line. I mean, if you want to say if somebody's, you know, trespassing and...
Thank you, yes. I did, I did read your findings of fact, and I didn't see any reference to noise in your findings, so I went to the bylaw and, so thank you. We'll take that under advisement. Thank you. I don't want to get into taking, that's not new testimony, that's pointing us to stuff that's on the record, so that I think is okay.
Right. There was only one other point that I wanted to make. There was some congestion by, by the public that there might be coatings on the panels, and that those coatings might be PFAS, and that they...
The finding was, there are no PFAS. Our finding was no PFAS.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for clarifying what's on the record. We're not taking new testimony, and I don't want to get into deliberation. And, John, be careful about letting people speak until we get a chance to... Oh, you can't mute them and...
I can, now if you'd like to.
I just want to, I, we're not letting...
Anyone speak.
Anyone speak, except when asked, response to a question, so, and he spoke to the record, so I think we didn't, we didn't get too far afield. So, Mr. Buckland, do you have any advice or comment?
No, I think you've done admirably well with the task in front of you.
Okay, and you don't think we missed anything? We didn't cover every single bylaw, although we made a general statement that it generally conforms to the bylaws, except where we noted specific considerations. In general, it meets the bylaws, except where we called out specific cases. And we did amplify some specific cases where there were, where there was testimony and discussion about considerations. For example, what is it called? Deeded access. Mr. Cudaro, any, any offer? Okay. All right, so I think we've concluded the findings of fact.
Except for five and six.
Oh, except for five and six, I'm sorry. God, I was trying to...
Sorry. It's my fault.
So, sustainable, client-sensitive, and environmentally conscious design. So, ignoring my proposed finding, is not environmentally conscious. The project creates much nee, I think the first part of my finding, proposed finding, the project creates much-needed sustainable energy. We have to make a comment. Is the proposed design environmentally conscious? The debate is, it's not environmentally conscious in the sense that it's removing trees from the environment, and by the way, the quality of those trees was discussed. This is not a robust forest habitat, although it is part of the critical pine barrens. It is, if you look at the pine barrens map, it is part of the pine barrens, but it is not a robust old-growth forest. So, in that sense, we have the trade-off, which we continually discuss in every solar project, between the benefits derived from renewable energy, solar, with the contrast of cutting down trees. So, is this environmentally conscious or not? I think you could find people who would argue both sides of that equation.
That is such a complicated equation.
I, I agree. Our...
Using the term environmentally conscious, I think, is what I'm deliberating on.
Well, there are people who feel strongly that it is, and...
More the term than anything.
Yeah. I don't know that I, we don't have a specific bylaw that uses that term of art.
This is a what-is-the-meaning-of-life question, really.
So...
Maybe you make a finding that says exactly that, that this is a, too difficult to make a finding on this aspect of the, of these zoning bylaws.
Okay, that we can make. I was going to defer to Miracle on Thirty-Fourth Street and the judge at the end. If we could get somebody to bring three letters from the post office, maybe we could defer to the post office, but that, Ken, could you make that, that suggestion again? That it's a difficult, that, that, I think the argument is, there are people on both sides of this, and there's evidence that's been presented...
There's evidence on both sides of this.
Of this. The state has not given us any measurable guidance, and has issued conflicting, clearly has issued conflicting orders, orders or guidance. There are places in the CMRs that talk about minimizing tree cutting, and then there are places where it says solar full steam ahead. So, I think the finding could be that this is a very complicated issue, and that we've heard evidence, this is a fact, on both sides of the argument, and we have insufficient data. I'm looking, I'm watching for, I'm waiting for smiles, but I'm not getting it, so...
Extra suspicion.
Clearly, this is, we're not qualified to rule on, on this.
And the state confuses the issue even further. Our governor made, our governor made statements that they're going to increase the forest in this state by X percent by this date, yet the day before, she says, we're going to increase our solar by this number by this date, same date.
Politician for you, right?
I get both sides all the time, and the state's not definitive on either side. Gung-ho on solar, save the trees.
Well, then they need to, they need to make, put out some incentive for solar to go in places where there aren't trees, over parking lots, on buildings.
Every, every power line, a gas line, it's already there. I mean, in my opinion, they haven't thought it through. There's a lot of places they could do it with cutting zero trees. We have power lines all over the state, gas lines, they could mandate it there, they could meet their goals, just power lines, median strips. There's a lot of places they could go that they're not considering that could solve the problem, not solve the problem.
So, I...
No, go ahead, I'm telling you.
They're all true, but that's beyond, we're, this, I think, for, for five and six, our finding is that, or that we can't, we can't, we don't have a specific finding, that there's evidence on, on both sides. Is that, is that a finding, Ken?
Yes, that is. That is a definitive statement.
So, the planning board, for item five, the planning board finds that evidence has been submitted on both sides of the argument that the project supports and does not support sustainable, client-sensitive, environmentally conscious design, and therefore makes no...
Finding.
No, what kind of finding? Conclusive?
Or definitive.
Definitive.
Definitive, yeah.
Yeah, definitive.
And that's the same, we just changed the words for number six, that we have evidence from expert testimony and on both sides of the argument, and there's no guidance from the state. So...
I agree, that's where we ought to go.
So, those are our two findings for this. Can you make a motion like that, Jane? Can you?
Trying to, trying to come up with a sentence.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm...
So, I would read sort of the, like, of the, restate the requirement, and then...
Yeah.
You want me to try again, or you got it?
Yeah. This is hard with all eyes on me, to come up with a good sentence.
Okay. The planning board finds...
Yeah, I think you strike the planning board finds.
No, no, this is now our finding, or, this is, would be our finding. Our finding, the finding, the finding is that evidence was supported on both sides of the issue of sustainable, client-sensitive, environmentally conscious design. No definit, no definitive...
Such that no definitive finding can be made?
Such that no definitive finding can be made.
Right.
And then we substitute the next one, open space, natural features, evidence of open space, natural features, and landscape emphasizing the function such that no definitive decision, or no definitive finding can be made. All of this is what is in our mind. This is enumerating for anyone reading our ultimate finding. How did we get to our conclusion?
Yeah.
This deliberation and this summary is how we got to whatever conclusion we're about to make.
Okay, so, planning board finds that evidence from, was supported from experts on both sides of the issue of sustainable, climate-sensitive, environmentally conscious design were presented, such that no definitive finding can be made.
So...
Good job.
Same for number six?
Yes.
Aye.
And aye. Okay, and then just similar kind of wording, and we could clean up the final wording.
So, you want me to spell this out?
Say, say that again.
The planning board finds...
No, no, for the next one.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
The planning board finds that evidence supporting, evidence, supportive evidence from experts on both sides of the issue of open space, natural features, and the landscape emphasizing the function of natural aesthetics, social, and recreational design were presented, such that no definitive finding can be made.
Second.
Aye.
Aye. I think.
And the chair votes aye. So, we, we'll just have to, when we, when we do our final, we'll have to go back to the tape and, and make sure we, we do the finding.
That was a convoluted sentence, holy...
All right, and so, regarding the findings, and we're going to close this section in a minute, we'll go back and we'll edit the document so that it comports what we said. We may reorganize it, we may get the zoning bylaw references folded, so that this...
Cleaned up the dates in there.
This section makes sense. Now...
Are you going to add that to the final top?
Well, yeah, this is, this was a deliberation, yes, yes, so...
We think that's been changed.
Will be in a document that Josh and will work on, and you will be given the opportunity to read before you sign it.
Thank you.
Okay, but the purpose of this deliberation and discussion was, and we're going to end this part, so that we can move to deliberation on a vote. So, I would like a motion to end discussion on the findings of fact.
So moved. Second.
And then, all in favor?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. I would like a motion to begin deliberation on, what's it called? Approval? Deliberation on approval of the application of 370 County Road for Site Plan Review Special Permit. Ken, do we have to find, approve both, can we find and approve them together, or do we need to act on them individually?
You can act on them all, all, under one motion.
Okay, so, Site Plan Review Special Permit. So, I'd like to open deliberations on the approval for project, whatever. Yeah, 1223 370 County Road.
Removed.
And a second?
Second.
And all in favor of opening deliberations?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Okay, so, given the findings, we need to approve or deny the application. The way I, I think we should proceed, we can discuss conditions only if we approve it, or if you want to look at the conditions before... we approve it, or if you want to look at the conditions before, before you vote for approval or denial, we can take those en masse. Has everybody had a chance to look at the proposed conditions? They probably need some help, but I don't necessarily want to, there are two and a half times the number of conditions as there were findings of fact, but if you want to go through each one, we can. Or do you want to vote and then look at conditions?
Are the conditions that we had the same, that you emailed us, or what Josh gave me tonight?
I don't think the conditions changed significantly. There may have been, I may have made some wording improvements, but I didn't think I changed the attend or added any conditions.
Okay, because I read that, and I want to make sure what I read is what I'm discussing.
It's close.
Okay.
So are you anticipating that we may vote on, to approve or disapprove?
That's, that's what I would suggest.
And then.
Then if approved, we go to condition.
And then deliberate on the conditions, and we will vote on the conditions at a later date?
Well, or tonight, if we want to get through it all. The question is, do you want to look at the conditions first, or do you want to look only, one of the reasons that I want to make sure that we discuss the conditions on the record is because if we, let's just say we were to deny, I'm only, because what's, what's happened in the past is we have denied a solar application, and the problem is we never got to a discussion of conditions, and then.
And then it comes back.
The applicant appealed the decision, which is their right, and now that, if it, if the judge acts without remanding it to us, we don't have an opportunity for having the conditions as part of the record. If the judge remands it back to us, then, well, judges can do what judges do. At least we have conditions on the record, should it, should it not get remanded to us. We could have our attorney represent that, okay, if you're going to approve it, these are on the record. And certainly, the applicant is aware of our thoughts on conditions. Whether they, I haven't asked them if they agree or not, I would think, if we get to conditions, it would be appropriate to deliberate with the applicant at that point.
Do you feel we're under the gun?
We have until October 16th, until they get a constructive approval. We must act and have filed with the clerk our final documentation by the 16th of October.
Just, I'm just asking a crazy question. Should we approve these just in case, without going over them, just so it's in place?
Well.
As a placeholder?
We could do that, but I do think if we're talking about, we've never really talked about conditions with the applicant, so if we're going to get to that point, getting their input, whether that.
I don't disagree, I'm just thinking, at least we'd have it in place. That's my question.
We could, what is your feeling, Mr. Buckland? We could.
I'm ambivalent on this one. I think Sam has a good, a good point.
Okay, so.
What if something happened? That, we got there, we didn't, we had nothing?
Okay, so, right now, the motion is to move to a vote. If you want to change the motion and discuss conditions, I can, we can, we can rescind that other motion, move the discussion of conditions, and if we do that, I would ask Attorney Morton if she wants to be part of that discussion, or remain silent. That would be her advice to us.
Why would we discuss our conditions with the attorney?
With the applicant. She's the applicant's representative, yes. There may be conditions or things that, we've always discussed conditions as we go through the application. We don't have to, I was suggesting that. It's not.
Only reason I brought up what I did is just in case.
Yeah, I agree.
I understand, as I said, this is the first time, we don't have advice of our counsel.
I know.
Regard, I had hoped he could come, so we could answer these questions procedural. Did you schedule a meeting on Thursday, and is he going to look at the tape and give us advice? Okay.
Do you think that would be prudent to do?
My, as I said, my concern is I want to have the conditions on record, so that if it's appealed, and we lose on appeal, that the conditions are part of the record.
I agree with you totally, and I'm only talking about emergency, if, what if.
But if we approve them, then that would require reopening it, if you wanted to go back and change it. Has everybody read the conditions? Is there anything you've got heartburn over? Anybody?
I gave it a first read only.
The one thing that I noted that was sort of, that would need to be, that should be addressed, I think, is some of the requirements for the landscaping, that there were different, different timing.
And there were, I was trying to develop a tier, some things had to be done for two years, some things had to be done in five years, and some things were, and then perpetuity.
Yeah, and I, I'm not even sure that in perpetuity is the right phrase either, because in my mind, it was about the mowing, and that was about the fire hazard that the fire department brought to light, and I think that maybe perpetuity is not the right.
Well, certainly, not perpetuity for the life of the project, certainly.
For the life of the solar project.
Right, and there's inconsistencies. Two of the sections say something different than that, you're right. Not perpetuity, then others say three years.
Right, and that's where.
But I was trying to actually build, there were actually.
There were tiers.
Yes.
There were different things.
That's fine, but I, yeah, but I think that we, that just should be cleaned up, and I would try and put it all in one place, so it's clear that there's a tiering of it.
So does that mean we're not ready to, we're certainly not ready to group edit?
That was the only thing that really stuck out in my mind, is not being clear, and could be.
And there were just some things about, you had work on the project, one was said nine to five, the other said seven to one, seven to five.
Did I get that wrong? The bylaw actually.
It's just small, yeah, cleanup kind of thing.
And then the other one that I saw, but Carl, you, we talked about this, and it was that it talks about asphalt paving, and we don't have asphalt paving, but you said that that's sort of, in there is almost boilerplate, just the regular standard conditions.
So it would, it says it would require an inspection after binder coat and before top, but.
Yeah, and it talks about striping and all that, but we don't have that, so that was.
That would never be, it was under the inspection section, so.
Uh, yes, right.
That would never call for an inspection, because it wouldn't happen.
Right.
The only other thing I had on the, on the decommissioning bond, we always have challenges where ownership changes, operator changes, so to have something around that.
That is actually in the new bylaw, I don't know if it's in the old bylaw.
Yes, right, I don't think it's in the.
I thought I tried to cover changing, I think.
Anyway, it's.
I thought I tried to get that changed.
You did, but I think it's in 53, but I think we could tighten that up a bit. That was my only, just because we end up chasing folks for that, but.
I'd like to make a statement about the landscaping. We just had 20 days with no rain. If there's no irrigation, nothing's going to grow.
Nothing's going to grow.
I walked by a solar array today, go down high dam, take a left, weeds. There's nothing growing there. No shrubs, no trees, no flowers, no nothing. It's sandy soil, we had no rain, it's not going to grow. It's that simple.
Yeah. Now, not, and I'm going to admit, this was, I found it, it's not entered into evidence, but the state has actually concluded that on sandy soils, meadows are not a good idea, they don't work. But we didn't do that in the discussion, that's learning for the future, and then residents have raised that concern. I don't know what else we would do, but we haven't had time. There's many things that we would like to do different or better that we.
I mean, four years ago, when I started here, I mean, we've come with so much information, things have changed so much, and quite frankly, this project could be four years away, there are going to be major changes in technology before this thing even gets a switch pole.
Right, which is why, if they haven't started construction, they have to come back for an extension, and I believe, which we will need to explore, that site plan, which is where we can make landscaping conditions, we can, we can improve the site plan when they come back for an extension. That's a legal discussion we haven't had yet.
There's potential for the batteries not to be an issue. They're looking at replacing lithium batteries totally.
But they aren't even part of this project application.
I agree.
And if.
Outloud changes that are coming down the pipe, before these projects were going to approve or disapprove even happen.
Yes, so if the applicant wants to add batteries, that's a major modification, and there's a process for doing that. They can do that. They come back, it's a major modification, we reopen all this and go through it again.
I agree. My only point was just example of things that are changing as we speak.
They will continue to change.
And how much, how much they've just changed in the past four years.
Right. The problem, the problem is, things are going to continue to change, and we can't not make a decision, waiting for all these things to settle down, because I don't think they're going to settle down anytime soon. And, and there has been discussion that better technologies may come along, and solar may no longer be, but that's all.
I understand.
So what do you, what do we want to do?
Doesn't it make sense to go to the conditions and approve, affirm, not affirm, and then go to a decision, so therefore you're protecting these conditions?
Right. All right, do we want to go through each condition, or sort of as a body, and just make general? I grouped them, I tried to group them.
Prior to any site work, you have conditions, you've broken them down, Carl.
I tried to group them, yeah.
You did. There are, I think there are five sections.
Right, sorry.
Yeah, there's five sections. That's just my suggestion.
I did one read, I did take notes. I tried to read it at least twice before I start changing things.
Yeah, so there were, I think, what, I had five, six, seven, seven sort of overriding conditions. The first one is that construction shall be conformed with the plans. I didn't have the title, but they're dated May 28th, 2024, to the applicant, either Ms. Morton or the engineer. That's the final plan set, right? May 28th? Yes. So, that would be the first condition. The construction has to conform to those plans substantially. The next condition is there would be no approved plans, no changes in the approved plans shall be made without the approval of the planning board, and our discretion would be determined whether they're major or minor, which is the public hearing question, to modify the site plan or the special permit, and that's, that's basically saying, you can't make changes without letting us know. As we've gone through in the past, we want to know before you make the changes, we decide if they're major or minor. If they're minor, the director, you know, you go for the director plan, you work it out, and you note the changes to the plan. If they're major, we've got to have another public hearing. As we have done, if they want an occupancy permit before construction is completed, we may require a surety. That's the item three. The next one, item four, which is the one we've talked about quite a bit, is if substantial use or construction permitted by the special permit site plan has not commenced within two years, excluding the amount for any time tolling, if there's appeals and such, then they have to come back. Well, it will expire unless they come back for an extension, and it's the onus is on the applicant to come back before the expiration for an extension. And as we've done in the past, if they come back after the date, there is no audit, there is no, nothing to extend.
Exactly.
Because it's expired. So you can't get an extension after the fact, because there's nothing to extend. That's what number four says. The next one, although we're not talking about hard pack paving, has to comply with all requirements for road opening, driveways, utilities, standards per the municipal maintenance director. Standard, that's standard condition. Changes in sewage flow, there shouldn't be any changes in sewage flow, but if there are, or wastewater disposal, they've got to, they've got to be approved. I don't think there's any wastewater or sewage impact to this project. I can't envision any, but if they decide to add toilets in the middle of the solar field, they'll have to come back for approval. And this, this again is sort of a CYA for us. Any element of use, use, site and building design not expressly approved here and under is hereby denied. I point out, changes in use, or uses that are not specifically allowed, are disallowed, and that, I'm looking at Josh.
Rather than denied, should it be prohibited, almost like?
Are hereby denied. I, they're, whatever, they're, they're not approved.
Okay.
You can't, you can't.
Prohibited?
You can't do a use change.
Agreed. Okay.
And that's, those, so that's the group of, is there any discussion on those, or do we want to accept those as a block?
Make a motion that we accept those as a block, items one through seven, as just discussed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Okay, the next group are conditions that apply to, before you begin work on the site. You have to have building permits before you can begin. An emergency response plan, a final emerg.
The question, Carl, she'll obtain necessary building permits. Are there any other approvals, consents they need?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Mr. Buckland, we haven't asked for any other, I don't.
Building permits. Okay, wow.
In this case, there's no sewage connection permits.
No water, okay.
The only other thing, might be a road opening permit for the driveway.
Strike the word building.
Wait.
Yeah, I'd rather, just rather limit it to building. Let's say permits, he just said, Ken just said.
There may be a road, a road opening. Okay, so strike the word building. Applicant shall attain all necessary permits for the project prior, this is.
Prior to site work.
Prior to site work, modifies all of these. The applicant has to submit a final detailed emergency response plan with the fire and police departments and the planning department, and instructions how to shut down, training.
Can I ask, make a suggestion?
Not really supposed to be deliberating.
Okay.
You can comment, but I think, I think our, it's okay for her to comment?
I can comment.
Okay.
Is contact list becomes stale? If there, heaven forbid, there's a fire, emergency, really important that they can reach the people they need? So is it every two years, provide an update or something? Cell phone numbers disappear, and I want to make sure our firefighters are able to contact whoever they need to contact. Contact lists.
With updates as required.
Yep. Every two years or something, periodic updates, I don't know, just.
Updates as required.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You got that note. I, you didn't, we didn't, we didn't read it so Patty can hear it, but it's on the tape.
Yes, so we're adding the words with updates as required to the end of item nine.
Okay. Yeah, I don't, I don't know how much in the minutes we're gonna need to capture about this deliberation. The next one is notifying the police, fire, the planning, police and fire before any erosion control. And that would re, trigger an inspection ultimately under our inspection procedures. Number 11, prior to any land disturbance, except for installing erosion controls, the limits for work, land clearing, the fence erosion shall be reviewed in the field by the applicant, planning and conservation staff. Again, that's under our inspection. It's a kind of inspection. Fencing shall remain in place until the completion of project construction. That's not fencing around the solar array, that would be any construction fencing. Fencing around the solar array remains in place for the life of the project. That's the bylaw. Is this worded? This is fence construction fencing, as opposed to fencing for the project. Is that worded clear enough?
Maybe construction fencing? Is that what you mean?
That's in this case, because we have fencing for the project.
It says construction fencing.
Until the completion of the project construction? Okay.
It doesn't say construction at the beginning, but this is talking about construction fencing. Again, some of these are general conditions that we apply to every project, the, the impact to these, this project specifically. There is some slopes around where the arrays are going, but the next one, we, if during the construction process, the conservation engineer, Mr. Cudaro, finds that more stabilization is required, they can be required. So that's prior to construction or prior to any site work, then during construction.
Should I make a motion? Do we want to do that as a?
Oh yeah, we want to do that.
I make a motion that we accept items eight through 13 under the heading prior to any site work as previous, as just discussed. Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. During construction and site development, the first one is just you need to keep a copy of the plan on site. This is trying to stage land clearing so that impacts can settle down. So land clearing, tree cutting, grubbing shall be done in phases, clearing one day, a pause, and then the following day to provide wildlife relocation so that the impact to the, to the environment is mitigated.
There's, there's no indication of a maximum area that you're thinking about.
Not, not in, in this.
So in theory, it could be the whole thing.
If they, if they could clear and grub, but you do whatever you do in one day.
You have to leave it for a day.
Let it, let it settle.
Yeah.
And.
I don't know if that's a legitimate concern or not.
Mr. Cudaro, you have a thought?
Just a quick one, Mr. Chair. Certainly, I understand your goals, but that's a very atypical comment to require the construction activities to start and stop and start and stop. If that's your wishes, so be it, but that's really, it's gonna make it challenging in the industry for them to really do their job.
Thoughts from the planning office?
I think this would probably be the first time you've ever conditioned such a project like this.
I, I, I did this, it came from research.
If, I think you've already established through your prior discussion about the findings and facts about the quality of the habitat, the quality of the trees, the quality of the ecology, and now you're saying you're applying a standard as if it were high quality, which it might not be.
Thoughts?
Could we shift the, the suggestion so that rather than stopping necessarily, that a phasing plan be developed with the planning office and the applicant? Where they do this area, instead of working through this way, they do this area and then maybe here and, you know what I mean? So that there's adjacent area that's undisturbed for a little bit to.
It certainly could be done. It's certainly reasonable to do a phasing plan for the site. I think you'll be, you, you probably won't be surprised how quickly the tree clears. We'll try to get in and out of there. It's very quick.
Okay, so one thought for you, and it's not to this applicant, but I'm looking ahead. We do have a solar project coming up where staging is a key part of the condition of approval, phasing. But I think that what what Jane suggested, a land clearing plan, a staged or phased land clearing plan shall be developed and reviewed and approved with the planning office and conservation commissioner, such that it allows for wildlife relocation plan.
I like that idea.
Okay, so I propose that we, we reword this to say that a phased land clearing and tree cutting and grubbing plan, a phased land clearing, including tree cutting and grubbing, shall be developed in conjunction with the planning office and the conservation commission and the town's consulting engineer and agreed upon before work begins. That would then move that up to prior to.
Yeah.
To the. Project's gonna be different. Small, large, stream, pond, it just differs.
Just as, just as a, a very public site that was just cleared recently, I don't know if you saw how quickly Damian's pantry cleared their site. It was done in.
I, I drove by it every day. This is actually under prior to any site work. So we develop a phased, phased clearing and grubbing plan that's agreed upon by conservation, planning office with advice and counsel from the consulting engineer. Doesn't have to come back to the planning board unless there's some major concern. So we reword that.
So I think that we already voted on the block of prior to any site work, so maybe we'll want to vote on that one separately and have it add to the, add to the prior to. Right.
Okay, so we'll move, the reworded number 15 up to, so let's vote on this one as a thing, so.
You need to vote on that one.
That one. We'll move, I, I move that we reword, reword condition 15 to require the development of phased clearing and grubbing plan and move this to the section called prior to site work. And we'll get the wording of the condition to be consistent. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. The next one, the planning staff or other agents of the planning board shall have the right to enter the site with notification to the owner to gather information, measurement, photographs or other materials to ensure compliance. Agents of the planning board entering the site for these purposes shall comply with all safety rules, regulations and directives. No equipment on site shall be started or allowed. Now, this is where we gotta get the time. What's the standard conditions for work in town? We, it's in the subdivision rules and regs. We, we have a standard, seven, seven to five?
Start times?
Yeah. Ken, do you remember? We have standards for start and stop times.
I don't recall what they are. I think it's seven to five.
Seven, seven. Okay, so.
We're sure seven to five.
Okay, so we'll amend.
Section 31 has seven to five.
Okay, so let's amend number 17 to read seven to five. Not permitted Saturdays, Sundays or illegal holidays. All construction parking shall be on site. No trucks standing or queuing on county road. Again, Mr. Cudaro, if you weigh on the daily cleanup, is that reasonable?
Perfectly reasonable.
Okay. Number 20, daily cleanup of construction debris, any soil that's out on the streets and within 200 yards from the entrance of the site driveway caused by construction of the project. The applicant shall check all stormwater features prior to and at the end of each construction day. In the event of a multi-day storm, the project manager, that would be the applicant's project manager, check the stormwater features to ensure that they are functioning properly and have not exceeded their capacity. Any necessary repairs, adjustments or deficiencies shall be commenced immediately and completed promptly. The applicant shall provide appropriate erosion control methods, silt fences, straws. I know the town has some preferences on, the conservation commission doesn't like some things. What don't you like?
Hay bales and plastic, plastic stabilization netting.
So you want us to strike straw bale? It just says such as.
Straw is preferable because it doesn't.
Well, it says the use of hay bales and plastic stabilization, stabilization netting is prohibited on site.
The last sentence. Carl.
How is hay different than, hay is different than straw?
Contains seed.
Right.
Hay, oh, okay.
Straw, straw doesn't include seed.
Straw doesn't include seeds.
Hay does include seed.
Okay, so there's a difference between, there's a difference between hay and, I'm not a farmer, so. Although I do remember in grammar school, there was a guy enlisted and it was called hay foot, straw foot, so they, he couldn't get his marching right, so they put hay in one boot and straw in the other and that's how he learned. Never mind, it was a child, child's book. At least once every week and after every major storm event, events greater than a quarter, storm, we defined it, defined storm event of greater than a quarter inch within 24 hours while construction activities occur. And for there, as long thereafter, the ground remains unstabilized, a report with photos shall be submitted to the planning office from the erosion control monitor certifying for the best of the knowledge. All work is purported with this decision and if not in compliance, what activities are being taken. Dust shall be minimized, controlled and managed on the site in accordance with accepted industry standards. Mr. Cudaro, is there an industry standard for dust mitigation? You could, why don't you just sort of?
Twenty-three and twenty-four, you've, you've sort of adopted the standards that would be part of a normal stormwater pollution prevention plan, which clearly was the intent here. So there are standards in that process of developing an SWP P P that would be applied. And in there, they have routine recommendations for the amount of water to be applied, et cetera. So you wouldn't necessarily need to reproduce those here and get that granular. But I might suggest between 23 and 24, you actually incorporate the acronym SWP P P.
Okay, so can you, so I'm, both of them or?
So, so they're really one and the same, quite frankly. You've, you've separated the dust mitigation from precipitation-based monitoring, but both of those exist under the umbrella of the SWP P P.
So delete, let's just say we get rid of the number 24, keep the paragraph and add a paragraph that say, say, are, is incorporated by reference. What, what are we incorporating by reference?
The requirements of the stormwater pollution prevention plan of the U S EPA's, NEPTI's NPDES program.
Are incorporated by reference.
And then you're there.
Okay.
And then if you, if you don't get every granular detail, that reference will cover you.
Okay, we'll get that from the, from the tape.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll, we'll let, no, no, actually if you send that to Josh so we have the words. Or Josh knows that by heart anyway, right?
I'm, I'm familiar with the acronyms, yes.
Okay, so we're gonna modify these two paragraphs. We're gonna delete the number 24, not the paragraph. And add a closing paragraph that says we incorporate that standard by reference. Inspections, I, I've talked about, the, the next three or four items are our inspection program. Inspections shall be required for all site work as outlined in the planning board inspection procedure. We do have sort of a draft. We probably need to get that published. And we need to get the rules and regulations to talk about inspection procedures. I think we, a schedule of inspections shall be agreed upon by the, I said the petitioner, we should probably use applicant so we're consistent. The applicant's contractor, the planning board, or it's designated, which could be Mr. Cudaro. Prior to any site work or including the clearing of trees, we've already talked about a plan for clearing. The applicant must keep the record of inspections and keep them secure because we've had problems at the end of projects where applicants, we, we can't come up with all the inspection reports. And I think we've implemented a procedure where as Mr. Cudaro submits inspection reports, the applicant either gets copies from the planning office, probably from the planning.
Getting them through the office.
Yes.
Right.
But the applicant should ensure that you get and keep the inspection. We've had problems with that, particularly for long projects. Reinspections could cost money. If, if it's your fault that we have to do a reinspection, we could, we could issue a charge, whether we do or not is it. And then, this is where Jane wanted to talk. Inspections of site construction should include, but aren't limited to, initial site clearing and grading, stockpiling of loam and topsoil, access road construction, and there is gonna be access road construction.
Yep. Agreed.
Placement of base material, dense grading, swales, loam, loamings before loaming and seeding according to approved plans, array fencing, turning areas and final cleanup after limits of work. And it's not gonna be a hay bale line now, we've decided that, right? It's gonna be a straw or what, it's, it's not gonna be hay.
It's not gonna be bale.
There's gotta be a generic term for it.
Erosion control line.
There you go, that.
Erosion control line.
True.
You don't want any silt fence, huh?
I'm sorry, my guy didn't hear.
Silt fence, yeah.
Silt fence.
Yeah.
Jane was talking about plastic. They refer to in the industry as silt fence.
Alright, so we'll change that to erosion control line. After clearing is complete but, and high groundwater elevations have been confirmed, shall witness groundwater and test pits prior to final approval of the stormwater system. After storm drainage facilities are installed but provided backfilling, this is the one that Jane.
Then I through L are the ones that I was referring to.
After pavement based material has been placed and graded, so that would be a condition because pavement based material is gonna get placed and graded. Right? No matter what, there's gonna be some kind of base material.
Yeah, but it's not for pavement.
Oh.
It's not pavement.
Oh, I see. You, the word pavement maybe, or other base material.
After base material has been placed and graded to.
How, how is the?
Roadway, roadway base material.
So then the, the finish of the roadway is whatever it is.
Yeah.
But you, but it'll have a base.
That was what I was trying to say. There's gonna be some kind of base.
Yeah, so just take out the word pavement and put in the word roadway.
Okay.
And.
Is there gonna be a binder course in this one? It's, it's gonna be gravel. Is there a binder course? There's no binder course.
It would not be. It's just gravel.
It still could be a condition, it just wouldn't be a call for the inspection. And the same thing with paving of the wearing surface. If they decide to pave a wearing surface, they have to call for inspection. There isn't gonna be one, but it doesn't hurt, right? And then after final striping, and there's not gonna be any striping. And then after final striping, and there's not going to be any striping, but it still could be a requirement for an inspection.
Superfluishes doesn't hurt the applicant, but it's good language to have going forward.
Yeah, going forward, for sure.
All right, so.
Okay, so.
As this, we would want to approve this during construction, site development, as modified.
So I make a motion that we accept items fourteen through twenty-eight with the number twenty-four deleted. The text remains, and item fifteen excluded because it was voted separately.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Okay, the next section. Wait, hang on. I missed a section break here. General provisions. We've talked about access twice, but the planning board and its designee has access, and we've agreed that follow safety protocols, notify the owner and the project manager. Plan revisions shall be submitted to and approved, and construction should be approved. We've talked about changes to the plans. Could be major, minor, but they've got to be submitted before being operated, acted on.
So, Mr. Chair, that's just a redundant comment to number two.
Yes.
Is that intentional?
It's not intentional. It's a construction error. So should we just delete number thirty as redundant? Number two above, and it was listed as an overarching.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'll accept a motion to delete condition thirty
So moved.
On this version of the document, because as soon as we start moving things around, the numbers change, but.
Yeah, so moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 I'm going to just strike that.
Well, you've got some numbers to move around up in the first, the previous section because of the twenty-four.
Yeah, the numbers are all going to change, but I'm trying to keep track of.
Yep.
This is the base document that we reviewed. So Patty, for the record, for the minutes, the document that we're reviewing is 2024-09-23, 9:59 a.m., 370 county road decision document. So I date and timestamp the document. So that's the document we're making changes to. During construction debris, we talked about removal of debris above, but this is during construction. Work should be performed between seven to five. No work done on holidays unless approved by the building inspector, which is a better... We didn't actually give them that above, but I think it's reasonable if they get a waiver from the building inspector.
Well, this includes the police department, too.
Yeah. Town road shall not serve a state. So this, again, is me trying to be belt and suspenders. So I don't think we need to take this out right now. It doesn't...
No, eighteen, just eighteen and nineteen are just repeated again in thirty-one. It's
As long as they're not inconsistent.
They're not... They don't conflict. They're just there.
No stumps. This does say it's not anywhere. No stumps or other debris shall be disposed on site. It doesn't say that. We don't want stumps. The other thing, assumed grinding.
Aren't they getting ground into mulch for the...
Yeah, but we, for, in general purposes, we never want stumps disposed of on any project site. So that's... So that we didn't say that anywhere else but above.
So aren't they being ground?
They may be, but I don't want anybody to think you can leave stumps there. We didn't grind that one.
As stumps, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Or even if you dig them up and lay them off in a pile. Some construction projects, they get the hoe or the excavator, if that's the word, and just pile them in a big pile. Do we need to say they can't burn any of the debris as well? I've seen construction sites where they burn debris. They can't burn debris in town anyway, can they? Do we have to specifically say that?
You have a note that covers you would have to get any and all applicable permits for the project under number eight.
Okay. Yeah, we don't want our development, any development project subdivision, anything burning site debris. I've been in places where they do. They do do that, and it's okay, but it's not okay here.
And you would want to condition it as such.
All right, so no project debris shall be burned? How would you say that, Mr. Cudaro? Buried or burned?
No stumps or other debris shall be burned or otherwise disposed of on site.
No stumps or shall be burned? 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 Or otherwise disposed of on site. Josh, you're not taking notes. You've got to do what we said.
Josh is taking my notes. I know I'm going to have to go back and watch this a few times, so.
We'll work on this together. The applicant shall comply with all bylaws of the town of Wareham and approval and conditions of town boards, commissions, and the water district. Did we miss anybody?
Fire department separate.
It'd be the fire district.
The water district is the fire district. I was informed today that the water and fire district don't work for the town. They're... And they're together. So I've got... So I should say water and fire district together, or how do they call themselves?
It's the fire district, isn't it? How does it... How do they call it? What do they call themselves? The fire district, right?
Wyant doesn't have the fire department anymore. They turned it over to the district.
Water slash fire district?
It's the water district. It's the water district.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah. Applicants shall comply with all rules and regulations of the planning board as written by Jane and Julie and as may be amended from time to time.
I think we need to capitalize rules and regulations.
Yes.
Yeah, that is a named document. We haven't come up with standards. Did you guys come up with a standard for defined terms and things? We haven't... What's capitalized? What's bolded? We haven't applied that to the documents yet. The applicant contractor shall establish a fifty-three G account to pay for said inspections conducted on behalf of the town of Wareham and replenish the fund as necessary during construction. Prior to any inspection being completed, the funding must be in place. Is there anything else we do with fifty-three G accounts beside inspections?
There are other things that you could do, but routinely, no, you don't do that.
Okay, historically, we haven't. What was your thought?
Well, just fifty-three is really relative to outside consultants as a larger group.
And in general, yes, but in general, those outside consultants that generally are part of the application process, not necessarily the inspections.
Do you want to say for said inspections conducted by outside consultants on behalf of the town of Wareham?
Does it mean there's some third-party consultants or something?
It doesn't say by who. It just says for said...
For said inspections conducted on behalf.
So any inspection or review.
By outside consultants, however, not by the town.
It says on behalf of the town is what it says. Yeah, we don't use fifty-three G to pay town employees. So any clarify... For inspections, I'll get rid of the word said because then it could be any inspection. For inspections or other reviews. Other necessary... No, other reviews. We'll have unnecessary reviews just for fun. Conducted on behalf of the town and... Okay. No request for an occupancy agreement shall be submitted until a final site construction inspection has been made, and we have a caveat that's coming that says all work is complete. And then we may not need the number here. It may just... Because it says if you need it ahead of time, you've got to... You can put up a surety agreement. Says prepare a Schedule A and put up a surety agreement. That's what it's supposed to say. It doesn't say all those words, but.
So now that we're at the end of a page, can we take a break?
Can we get all the way down? How far? No, there's a lot more to go in this section.
Yeah, right.
We'll stop at... Hang on, I got to back up. Oh, the number, it got screwed up again.
Yeah, I'll cover that in the motion.
Okay, so we're going to stop at the end of number thirty-five. And we're going to take a five-minute break. Pause the... Pause. It's not a hearing, so it's a... Pause the discussion. All right, my computer went to sleep. We were on thirty-six, I think, right?
Yes, correct.
Which was a continuation of the prohibition in thirty-five. So if the applicant needs an occupancy permit prior to completion of site work, the planning board may allow if proper security is posted in a satisfactory amount. And we've gone through that process recently and multiple times. We do it for subdivisions all the time. It's a standard. It's nothing different than what we've done. Plantings and stabilizing slopes will be made. Okay, and this is where I've got some different years, but this two years is for stabilization of the slopes. Is two years sufficient? That's kind of what we've always requested.
It should be fine.
Okay, so let's leave that one at two years, but as we go through and talk about the dates, let's see if we've gotten something out of whack. The zoning bylaws of the town of Wareham, section fourteen ninety, is the intent of this bylaw. That's just the bylaw. It is further conditioned upon the applicant providing evidence that an interconnection agreement. This goes back to the fact that the whole DPU and the Plymouth study, I tried to work, that you need to come back once we have that agreement in place. And we just discussed the fact that that's happened, and if it makes any change, it's possible that agreement could require changes to your plan. I don't know that, but this requires you to come back and just let us know that you're ready to begin, and just feedback on what happened.
Can we get a funky numbering thing?
Yeah, we'll fix the... Yeah, it's because it's indented, and I didn't do good formatting. All construction activities relative to this shall comply with zoning bylaws, rules and regs again.
Yeah, not zoning regs, but rules and regs, yeah.
Planning board.
Take out zoning.
I think this is a duplicate. I may have moved some things around, so we'll make sure that.
You have a generic one further above, Carl.
Yeah, that's what I said, yeah.
Yeah.
The thing is, number thirty-three, we need an as-built plan at the end. We're trying to make sure that all our projects get as-built plans for the records. The building department gets it, the planning office gets it, the planning board, and they have to be stamped. These aren't, you know, Joe, the garden contractor drew a... We have an applicant who did that, but we need stamped plans.
The next one, Carl, is number seven, identical, so you can strike that.
Which one is... Wait, an element?
It's number thirty-four, but it's also seven.
Element.
The first page, the same one.
Oh, okay, so we're going to delete the one numbered thirty-four inappropriately here. Any person aggrieved, this is the law, but any person aggrieved by the planning board may file an appeal pursuant to provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-eight seven, and within twenty days with the clerk. I mean, that's just the process, but it is also... I don't know if we need to state it as a condition, but it's what has to happen.
I'm not sure you need that, but.
Okay. I...
I would strike it. I don't... It's the law.
Okay, the only reason I was calling it out is I wanted the citizens, of course, all the citizens. Are there any citizens on the Zoom, John? Okay, so, all right, so they heard me say it. We don't need to have it as a condition, but anybody aggrieved by this decision has to file an appeal with the town clerk within twenty days of our final decision.
Are we taking this one out?
Everybody kind of... It is the law. There's... It's... We can't change that. It's in the bylaws. It's in the state law. It's... It doesn't... It's...
Okay, no need to state it.
We don't need to restate it. And I guess the risk of restating it is it would... If the law were to change in some way, we could be at odds with the law. I don't know. I guess it's best not to repeat things from other places so we don't get out of whack. Again, the next one, let's state it, and then for this decision, I... This has been a problem. And even though this is a requirement of the bylaw and requirement of the zoning laws, we don't have applicants always doing these things. So the decision and any notice must be filed with the registry of deeds, must have the stamp of the town clerk after twenty days, and that no appeals are applied, and that if such appeal has the tolling. But you have to file with Plymouth Registry of Deeds.
Recorded.
It has to be recorded, and then it has to be returned back to us, a copy of that recording. That doesn't always happen, so I'm trying to call it out to just make sure our process, because then we end up with, you know, the planning office not having the file, and we can't go back. It's not happening all the time. We just want it to happen.
May I suggest that you move that into things that happened prior to start of work? It seems like it may fit better there.
Yep.
Yeah, rather than ongoing, continuous.
This could be actually moved up into the top section, right? Because, all right, so I... So thirty-six and thirty-seven, we move up to the stuff at the top? General... Just, I didn't even have a heading. These are things. Okay, so as worded, we'll move thirty-six and thirty-seven to the beginning. Okay, the next one. The applicant or their designee shall designate a qualified professional engineer, certified professional in erosion and sediment control, who shall be approved by the planning office to act as the erosion control monitor and oversee compliance with this decision at the site. The erosion control monitor shall be responsible for any emergency placement of erosion controls. The name and phone number of the erosion control monitor must be provided to the planning office in the event that this person has to be contacted due to an emergency at the site during any twenty-four-hour period, including weekends and holidays. The person shall be given authority to stop construction for noncompliance with this decision, especially in regards to erosion control and wetland protection. decision, especially in regards to erosion control and wetland protection. The erosion control monitor, we haven't had an erosion control monitor in place in the past, but this is something I think we're trying to improve, whether, I mean, this doesn't have to be somebody new, it's just, you know, somebody on the, certified on the project staff. Anything you would change?
So my, my only clarification I would ask is, the need for a CPESC seems perfectly reasonable, and again, that's tethered to that SWPPP program.
Right.
The, the requirement that they need approval by the planning office seems counterintuitive. Getting a CPESC registration, it seems like it might be unnecessary for the planning office to approve them.
Thoughts? Okay, we're striking planning office approval?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, they have to provide the name to us.
Right. Right, you should, you should seek notification of who the individual is, but I don't know that you really want the authority to approve them.
Okay.
But then just, just going into your, your intended note here about the person shall have the authority to stop construction, I certainly agree with the idea of that, but if the applicant is sort of self-performing, it's unlikely that that person working for the applicant or the contractor will ever, you know, shut down a job site.
I understand your point, yeah.
If somebody from the town is acting in that role, somebody of the board is acting in that role, everything here rings true. If somebody from the construction team is anointed, you know, I don't know that you'll get what you're trying to out of that. Just, just a comment.
Comment, okay. So they, they have the authority, whether they use the authority or not is.
That's true, that's true.
Okay. The erosion control monitor will be required to inspect and oversee the cleaning, cleaning, what about weekly reports? I highlighted that, what, what kind of frequency of reporting, and what can you guys actually look at?
Well, if you did weekly reports, you would have had the last three weeks with a report that said there were no erosion concerns. But you could tie it to post-storm events of a certain degree.
Which we talked about earlier, about needing to act, I don't know that we said reports.
So the SWPP program, which you incorporated by reference, requires an inspection form to be completed either each week or at those precipitation events. So there is an inspection report that you have now captured, so the only question is whether or not you want the planning board to get that piece of paper.
I, I think it should be maintained or filed somewhere, and. But if we don't call out, you know that those reports are required because you understand the program, I wouldn't have known that those reports, I haven't read that document. How do we? How do we test compliance with that condition?
That, that's a tough one. If you want the truth, the way this usually plays out is there's some reputable contractors, they fill out the reports, they have them, they're ready to go. Most will sit in the truck on a Friday afternoon and fill out two or three weeks, and, you know, just to say that they did it. It's, it's really a self-performance monitoring situation, quite frankly.
Okay. Alright, so I, I have a proposal on how we want to change that last line. Question to you as a professional engineer, isn't your stamp at risk if you just sit there and fill out reports and?
So the, the stamp comes with certain ethical responsibilities, that is true, my professional engineer stamp. The certified professional in erosion and sediment control is completely different animal, completely different ethics and standards associated with it, not as heavy-handed as a professional engineer.
Okay, alright.
Ethically true, but.
Okay, so we have some enforcement condi, so rather than weekly monitoring reports, monitoring report, I'm gonna change, get rid of the word weekly. Monitoring reports as required under, what was your?
SWPPP.
Under the SW.
P-P-P.
Three-peat.
Three-peat.
Shall be submitted, shall be maintained by the applicant.
Maintained?
Maintained.
Maintained is correct. And often required to be maintained on-site at all times.
On-site at, on-site at all times by, by the applicant, and submitted to the planning office on request.
Upon request, that's typical. Especially when you have an overwhelmed staff.
Well, that's, I mean, that, that's the problem, I mean, we have a very small enforcement staff, we have a very challenged, staffing volume challenge, I mean, requesting things we can't deal with seems burdensome. But we don't want to not get stuff that we need, okay. So monitoring reports required under SWPPP shall be maintained on our site at all times by the applicant and submitted to the planning office when requested, upon request. And if Josh never asks for one.
They're off the hook.
Until the very end, when they come back.
When he wants all of them, right.
You'd ask for all of them at the end, say please provide 52 weeks of reports.
Yes. Invasive species shall be removed, this is another Jane area, from the restoration areas for at least three years.
I'd take out the, from restoration areas.
From, wait, tell me where you're.
Just invasive species shall be removed from restoration areas.
Strike the "the."
Okay, for at least three years?
Yeah.
This is a case of where, a different kind of thing, or do you want to?
Yeah.
The other thing was erosion control, slope mitigation.
Slope, yeah.
This is invasive species. So three is okay here?
I think that's okay.
So you could choose to do whatever you want, but under conservation protection, restoration areas are typically two years, two growing seasons.
Okay, four at le.
You could ask for more, of course.
Josh, two years is okay?
Yeah, and we also have a standard for percentage of regrowth as well.
Which doesn't, you.
Viability.
Yeah, but that doesn't, we didn't, we incorporate, you didn't have a, you gotta not, no, non-involvement findings, so we didn't incorporate anything from that.
Right, we issued our standard order.
Which would include that?
No, I don't think our standard order did on this one, no.
Okay, alright, so right now I got rid of the, I'm gonna change this for three years following, not at least, but for two years following. And then do you want to go back and add some of your conditions here, Josh, about? Or? Or you think it's okay with what we've got? We don't need to add?
No, we're, we're fine.
Okay. And again, we're saying you can't change the plan without working with us. That's, that's a big deal for us, because, for me, I was, as I was writing this, I was smarting from a.
Prior projects.
Drubbing. Any requests from here too? So this is, we've said this a couple of different times, maybe we want to move all of this up. Consult, as we consolidate the three or four times I tried to say this into one statement upfront. I mean, they're all trying to say the same thing.
Right.
You can't change the plan, you can't do the work before we talk. If it's, if it's a small change, it's not gonna be a big deal. If it's a major modification, we gotta, we gotta work through it. I'm not trying to be onerous, but we just want to stay on top of this stuff. Okay, so let's, I'd, I'd like to suggest that we have Josh work with the three or four times we talked about plans middle and summarize it in the beginning section of the document. But in general, we agree that we don't want applicants deciding for themselves. Now, Phil, you've cautioned me in the past, there are things that sort of happen along the way that are changes, that just happen. How, how do we distinguish those?
I, I mean, it clearly depends on what the changes are, so there's no clean answer to that question, but to fool yourself into thinking that a plan gets built in exact accordance with the plan is, is a problem.
Having done plans, not construction plans, but worldwide plans, no plan survives.
Hardly ever, hardly ever. So, you know, oftentimes what we've seen is people just enumerate or conditions enumerate a point of contact to solicit an opinion, and it could be Josh, sorry.
It would be the planning office, yeah.
And just say, the planning office, you know, would like to move this three feet to the left, what do you think? And, and you would essentially be empowering him to make those decisions.
Which, I think the intent of this language is, they would come and say, Ken, Josh would say, this is de minimis, or a minor change, the planning director or Josh is empowered to make that decision by our bylaws. And then the only thing that the planning board requests is just a notification that that happened. Yet we don't, and, and sometimes we try and go back and forth, should you come to the planning board and let them know, or, but we've kind of agreed that the planning office has that discretion, we haven't procedurally worked that out, right? I mean, but if moving something three feet, if it's minimal, the planning director has the authority to, to approve that, that's what the last set of bylaws said, right? Yeah.
That's fine.
I think that's the intent.
They found a tree they want to save, a very noble gesture, but they have to move something. Common occurrence.
Alright, so the, the intent of what we're saying here is, is if you need to make a change, we want to talk about it. If it's minor, it's not gonna be a big deal. That's what we're, the intent of this condition or these conditions is trying to get to. And as you said, if you get a developer who's trying to work with you, and that these aren't problems. Okay, so we'll, in that, does anybody have any problem with that thought or discussion? Okay. No trees shall be removed, removed except as shown on the approved plan, trees to be retained shall be protected in the field, future changes. Just prior written approval from the planning office. Again, even if it's a de minimis change, we should get it in writing so we have a record, so that three years down the road, a different constellation of folks aren't saying, well, how the heck did this happen? So things, we should just try and keep a project record, and those could just get recorded in viewpoint even, right? A minor. Okay. Again, this is another copy of the site plan review not being exercised within two years.
It's another duplication.
Yeah, no, that, that, we've said that.
Appears in four, yeah.
Yeah. It's site plan, we need to be clear, site plan and special permit, this thing is a site plan review with special permit, because this is still under the old bylaw where they're combined, Article 15 was sort of combined. But this is the site plan review, I guess if you start the site plan review, you've started the special permit, if you've started the special permit, they're, they're together, but this is again trying to, if, if we want to consolidate all those into one statement.
So are we gonna take 42 out?
I suggest we allow Josh to take the intent and.
Yeah, look at number four.
Get it into number four.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it, and it's, it's, you know, upfront.
And it's expired permit, not rescinded.
But the special permit is a permit.
Yes, exactly, so we have permit under site plan review, so.
Alright, we'll get the wording.
Yeah.
Right, but the intent is, you gotta start materially within two years or come back for an extension. And there's, the general law talks about extensions for special permit and the conditions thereof, good cause, good cause is not clearly defined, but we'll, we'll have better, better understanding of good cause by the time this one comes back. The applicant is responsible for filing any other permits or approvals that may be required by state, town, federal. An example would be the stormwater permit approval from the planning office. But the applicant's responsible for getting and maintaining all those permits, and we're not responsible for reminding them what they are and.
Is it, I had put in here filing and maintaining, because some of them are, it's a maintenance, isn't it?
Yes, maintaining.
Yeah.
Filing and maintaining onsite.
Yeah.
And again, we could add the language and be made available to the planning office upon request. Well, or the zoning enforcement officer, or. To the town of Wareham upon request, more generally, or?
If, if the zoning enforcement officer needs something, he could always come to us and we could request it, you know, we, we could get the documents no matter how you word it.
Okay, I just, again, the idea is to be clear to the applicant what the expectation is without being onerous. Oh, and the next item, I, we got the, the applicant shall retain copies of all plans and changes, documentary evidence of all filings and recordings with the town, the registry, or any other agency or entity, all inspection reports and any other project-related communications. These shall be presented with any request for modifications, change, so the applicant has to keep an entire record. That's, we said it in a bunch of places, but I got it down to this. Alright, we're done.
Okay, so.
Just, we could just find it as amended, you know, I don't think you have to list all the amended.
Yeah, well, we've got, shall I name the deleted ones and?
No, no, I just said as, I, I, do the group as amended.
Okay, so I move that we accept the provision, the provisions under the heading general provisions, number 29 through.
Forty-four. Forty-three, forty-four.
With some duplicate numbers, as amended.
As amended.
So, Mr. Chair, may I?
Sure.
Just weigh in, I'm sorry. So I was going to suggest before you made the full motion, while you're talking about applicant's responsibility, circling back to the discussion about inspections, perhaps considering a condition, it is the applicant's responsibility to seek and notify for any inspections. Again, you, they need to bear that responsibility, just a suggestion if you want us to consider.
They, they do, that's clearly.
Is that anywhere in the next?
Where you list them? You had listed the.
We, you had listed the inspections, but the applicant's responsibility to call and seek those inspections.
So maybe you put it in there though, that section?
Yep.
So Schedule, okay, so number 25, we can add at the end, it is the applicant's responsibility.
But that's just for site work.
Well, this is for inspections, any inspections, right?
Well, it says inspections shall be required for all site work, it's outlined in the planning board inspection procedures, but this item, I think, is specifically focused on site work?
One of them listed all the inspections.
When would we not, when else would we do an inspection?
They gotta get a building permit, right?
Well, but then all the inspections have to be in place and documented before they can get the building permit.
Well, it has, Section 28 says inspections of the site construction, it has that whole list, so that's another place it appears.
I think you were on track under number 20. I think you were on track under number 25. It just, it says adequate notice and no case less than 24 hours shall be given to the planning board it's designated to make inspections of the work. I think somewhere in there, it should just reinforce that it's the applicant's responsibility. That's all I was suggesting.
Okay, and then just to be...
Good place to put it, yeah.
Just to be clear, Jane, I'm not sure, the inspections that happen after the building permit, which the zoning, the building, and the director of inspection, those are not the inspections we're talking about.
Okay, got it, got it. Right, right, right.
Those are his, his inspections.
Yeah.
And not in our purview.
Yep, yep.
Right?
Yep. Second.
All right, so I modified 25, I'll work with Josh. So, we have a motion and a second. To kind of broadly...
Aye.
As amended.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Okay, so I added the applicant's responsibility, and I'll... Which section are we in, Jane?
We are in "Ongoing and Continuous."
"The access road shall remain clear throughout the year, including snow removal in the winter, free of brush and debris to allow vehicle access. The 12-foot wide perimeter shall remain unobstructed to the brush truck. Perimeter fencing shall be maintained at least a six-inch wildlife gap, as shown on the plan for the duration of the project. Fencing shall be maintained in good condition. Electrical battery storage is prohibited." Are you giving up on us?
May I be permitted to speak?
Sure.
Yes. Because I know you've got these, this in hand, so, good luck.
All right. "Maintenance of the landscaping in accord with, in accordance with the final approved landscape plan shall be perpetual." Perpetual for the life, it's probably, we mean for the life of the project, right?
Yeah, and that's what I think. They'll be in there mowing after them.
So, they have to maintain, and then they have to monitor, maintain perpetually, but monitor for three years.
Well, no, monitor, that was invasive species, that was something else.
No, that's number 49 says...
Oh, yeah, I didn't get there yet, so.
Yeah, okay.
So, Carl, I just have one concern, and I'd have to double-check the plans on this project specifically, but you mentioned a 12-foot wide perimeter.
On the brush.
On the outside. Many of the applicants we see that come before CONCOM will propose their project right up to our 30-foot no-activity zone.
Okay, we haven't, I don't know that we've actually said the 12-foot on the outs, we've talked about, has to, there has to be access around the outside of the fence.
Okay. And actually, for this project, it would be a commercial project, so we have a 50-foot no-activity zone associated with resource area.
How does that, what's a, this is not in a resource area, though, is it?
Uh, it borders on wetlands, it borders on the pond, it borders on...
So, they, what you're saying is they wouldn't be able to cut brush if it, if it was in that area?
Within the 50-foot no-activity zone. And many times, these projects will bring their limit of project to that line. So, just having a, a condition of that conflicts with a condition of another board.
My concern would be fire access.
The fire department specifies their access and clarifies what's necessary for them to access the, the site for fire purposes.
Yeah, and that's, I think, where I got this. Josh is saying, though, it conflicts with his order of conditions.
Does the fire department require access around the perimeter of the project?
I thought that's where I got it from.
Okay.
I thought, but I can't remember. I didn't make this up.
No. I'm not saying that you did.
They do. They require access all the way around the outside of the, of the project.
Okay, so let's, let's leave that this way and...
That might have to be something that CONCOM figures out before.
Yeah. So, the applicant is aware of that conflict, we understand the conflict, and will, will, the town will work to resolve that conflict.
Well, the use boards can figure out a way to resolve that issue.
Okay. But the idea is, we want the fire truck to be able to get around the outside of the fire.
Right.
So, they don't have to drive through the middle to get, if necessary. That's their call, how they get there, but...
In experience of driving a brush truck, I don't think they would have any trouble.
Unless there's a big tree or a bunch of trees.
Even that might not be a problem.
Oh, I have, I've seen the brush truck, but I don't know what it can knock down, or...
You'd be surprised.
Yeah.
So, don't you want to say Wareham Fire Department brush truck?
What did I say?
It just says Wareham brush truck.
Could be. Oh, hang on. You're going back now, hang on. The Wareham Fire Department.
Item 45.
No, item 45. Okay. And then we agree, is the town boards will have to figure out if there's a conflict and how to, how to work with the applicant. We're not going to put them in a situation where they can't do anything, or find them.
Right. I, I don't think this is the project to get hung up on it.
No. I think I've said electrical battery storage is prohibited, and we may have said that earlier. It's prohibited under this permit. If they, if they want to come back and get a modification, different, different subject. "We changed landscape plan instead of perpetual for the life of the product, and owner or applicant, it says owner, should be applicant instead of owner, right? Would be applicant. Responsible for replacing landscaping does not survive. Planings that do not survive shall be during the growing." We recognize that there are growing seasons, you don't want to be replacing it in the middle of a snowstorm. Shall monitor landscaping. Here, we said monitor the landscaping for three years. Pesticide, pesticide application, so they're responsible for the life of the project. If, Mr. Cudaro, I don't know how we would find it. Do we want to say they have to monitor it yearly, or should monitor it for a period of three years? I, I understand the point, but if we, if somebody finds that the trees all died, even if they're not, we, they, we want to hold them accountable.
Are we going to ask that they continue the mowing?
Well, we didn't get to mowing yet, but...
Yeah, but I just, I want to be thinking about this at the same time.
Well, the applicant is responsible for maintaining the site for the life of the project. And mowing would be part of, that's covered in the operations and maintenance plan, right?
And I say that mostly because of the fire department's concern about fuel.
Right.
Development.
Yes, so they're responsible for maintain, the operations and maintenance plan, which touches on site maintenance.
But if all the, if the meadow's dead.
Well, that's...
Which it will be.
Which is why we've said they've got to maintain.
But for a short period of time.
No, no, it says they have to maintain it for the life of the project.
So, so do you really want to even have a sentence about monitoring for three years?
Well, that's up until, that's, okay, here was my thought. You're right, we may want to, is generally, generally, a lot of die-off happens right at the beginning. Trees and buffer shrubs. If the meadow gets established, if the border shrubs get established, after three years, if they're established, they're pretty much established. I'm...
They're usually fairly hardy, I mean...
By that point, yeah.
But...
So, what do you, how would you...
I don't know what I would do differently, if anything.
And I guess, yeah. It just could be read that you monitor for three years, and even though it says maintenance, what does that mean? Yeah.
Well, the maintenance is described in the, the operations and maintenance program.
But I just don't, it, they just don't seem to align.
Okay.
So, maybe that, maybe just the first sentence comes out.
Yeah.
"And any pesticide application shall be applied by a licensed core applicator," and blah, 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 blah. So, that's, this item just becomes the pesticide item.
And they have to maintain it in perpetuity.
Or for the life of the project.
Yep.
Well, yeah, that's, we've got, so we just want to get rid of that first sentence.
Yeah, it's kind of confusing.
All right. Okay, I'll, Jane, so the point we're trying to get across here to the applicant, and the condition we're trying to establish is, they have to maintain the site.
That's right.
For the life of the project.
Have to inspect and have to maintain, yep.
And that includes maintaining the meadow, mowing, shrubs, any screening. We don't, our landscape plan doesn't have a lot of screening buffer because it's in the middle of the, the property. But there are other, remember, this is also trying to be a model for, so we're not being deemed arbitrary and capricious.
Correct, going forward, yes.
Trying to establish a, a set of standards that any solar project coming to town should know what to expect from us. And they need to be reasonable, and they need to not be arbitrary, and then we need to be consistent. That doesn't mean we don't learn something new. That's, but that's our goal. All right. Okay. This is new, we haven't done this before. The next one, a landscape buffer, performance bond, this is for five years. Do we want to have a performance bond? And for how long? Because in the past, I don't think we've had performance bonds for landscape.
I suppose I, I would say, I suppose that this puts some protection in place that if there's die-off because of construction, or there, there are bald spots in the forest that we weren't aware of prior to construction, that they can be filled so that it's not noxious to the neighborhood.
And the bond is only in case we have to do it, right?
Yeah, right.
Instead of them doing it.
And the, and the meadow, which is really the mitigation against taking the trees, which is to create this meadow, and it's just...
Well, this was specifically for the buffer, which, how we, we could, we could make it more broad. A landscape performance bond, get rid of the word buffer.
Yeah, because what is the buffer? What's it consist of?
Well, in this case, probably not much.
Right.
As an example, if you go to the one behind Wareham Crossing, we had a lot of issues with the applicant not maintaining, trees dying off.
Yep, yep.
And only the...
Not being mowed, it was...
And not being mowed.
Not maintained.
Things like that. There, we, we got, the trees have actually, the last time I went by, it looks like all the dead trees have been replaced.
They were replaced in springtime.
And the trees that are there all look kind of healthy, and it looks like they're growing.
It's Christmas trees.
Yeah. But in any case, that, that, so that's what I'll, as an example of a buffer. In projects like this one, I don't think we've required a large buffer.
Right.
Or any. Well, because of where it's located.
Right.
And the 75-foot setback doesn't apply because it's in the middle of, I mean, it applies, but it, it's in the middle of the property. This doesn't come close to 75 feet anywhere, right? I looked at the plan, I didn't see any.
What if something is built after the fact, it's closer to the, to project?
They can't.
Well, they can, at Zimmer's, they can build another building.
They not, no. They are obligated to maintain that. That 75-foot setback doesn't go away. It's, it's...
I agree, but they could...
Oh, so I'm, I'm trying to think, yeah, I mean, if, if the Zimmer family starts subdividing this lot, then when they come for, before a subdivision, or the A and R, we've got to remember that there are, and it's going to be shown on the, the plan, but you're right, we need to remember that. I don't know how we do institutional memory for stuff like that.
It's something we have to consider for the future.
Yeah.
How, how do other towns deal with the changes over time? We, we just have to kind of be aware of that as we review projects.
Yep.
So, if they're going to parcel this off, they would have to either come before us with an A and R. Actually, I have, going to stop for a minute. When we did the project review, we didn't look at the setbacks based on lot lines. We looked at it on the overall. So theoretically, Mrs. Zimmer could sell one of these lots.
Right.
Without coming to us for an A and R or a subdivision, I don't know how we, how we kind of protect that.
I don't know.
Because that's not how we did the setbacks. So theoretically, the setback or the fence could actually cross a lot line. Certainly, if a fence crosses a lot line, that would come up. But the setbacks, which are kind of invisible.
Right.
Or your no, or your no-activity zones.
There's a lot of meadows to be subdivided.
That's right.
Yeah. I don't know how we, how we, we have to rely on the planning office and the... Any thoughts, Josh? Phil, any thoughts on how, how, how does this get managed in other towns? It's not the planning board can't, we wouldn't even know about that.
I work here in Wareham. I'm sorry.
Well, that would be the zoning enforcement officer's responsibility, because he would issue the building permit, right? But the setbacks don't appear anywhere except on this plan, which is recorded.
But can she sell a piece of property?
No.
For him?
She, she's still obligated by these setbacks. I'm looking to my real estate attorney. How do these things?
I, well, if someone is buying the lot, adjacent lot, they're going to run title, and they would presumably come across that, our plan, and assuming that there's some kind of notation on the plan, but it sounds like...
The setback is marked on the plan.
Right.
Which is recorded.
And they would call it out as a potential issue. But that would be way down the line that, but someone doing a plan would run, would run the title, and that's where they might discover.
And, and the setback is marked on...
The plan.
The plans. And then...
Mr. Chair, point of order, you have to vote to go past the hour of 10.
Okay, why?
It's meeting.
Where?
This has been very inconsistent over the years.
Okay, I'll vote, but I, it's not part of our rules and regulations. I'll vote.
It's been a procedure of all the boards and committees.
Yeah.
Okay. So, I'm looking for a motion to continue past 10.
I'm moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 You can vote on this.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. All right.
Even that's how it would be discovered.
It's just been consistent throughout the other boards that when they hit the hour of 10, they vote to move past it.
Yeah, okay.
Along with town meeting.
Well, the school committee...
Well, town meeting is, is it...
Different animal.
Yeah, that's written down somewhere, but, okay.
So, that's how, is how it would be discovered.
All right, so there, there are some protections. Okay. "Groundwater monitoring program shall be implemented prior to the start of construction, and a performance bond shall be required to..." I had a question about this. I understand the intent. What is, is groundwater... What is, is groundwater monitoring a standard? What do they monitor?
Mr. Chair, I was going to ask you what your intent was by the comment, what would you like them to be monitoring?
Right.
You could monitor the, one, the level, right? You'd drive a well, you'd get a base level, and then you would monitor the level of the water. And then you could take analytical samples of, of the well, have them sent to a lab.
Yeah, I had a, I had a prob, this, but beyond that, okay, so what? They monitor it. They find that, you know, it's oil bubbling up, okay, so what? There's no consequence. I understand that we're trying to monitor the groundwater, but it's, well, there's no standard. So one, if we're going to have this condition, we've got to tell them what they're monitoring it for. But it seems to me also, if they're going to monitor it, and we tell them what for, then there has to be a so what? I'm not sure...
Especially for a project that's probably going to contribute no change to the groundwater.
Well, there was the whole concern about the Cohackett Brook and the Sipican River, but I, my concern was, is I thought about this, I don't know what I'm telling them to monitor. Me, that's me, but... And then if we tell them what to monitor, there has to be a baseline, and then what, what change triggers an event, and then what do they have to do about it?
Other standards? You know, are there typical aspects that are routinely monitored for typical issues?
For certain projects, so some projects where you're introducing vehicles, you'll, you'll monitor for volatile organic compounds, gasolines, ethylenes, things like that. In areas of drinking water supply, those will come into play. Others would be sediment. So there are things that could be tested for, you could be testing them against drinking water standards, for example.
I don't, I don't, okay. I'm not sure what we do for this application, but thinking ahead, we, there, we have another project where we're going to have to monitoring because there's a concern about flow. But that's not this project, I'm just trying to, I don't know, I don't know what to tell them to monitor for in this project, and it's not...
The engineer, I think, on this, on the plan, would like to, has raised his hand to speak.
Okay, yeah, what would you, before you say anything, I'm not looking for testimony, so I want to be careful.
I'm a licensed site professional, and we do a lot of monitoring of contaminated sites. And I just want you to know that if you say you want it tested for everything, it's probably $5,000 per sample. So if you have six monitoring wells, it'd be $30,000 every time you did it. So you have to focus on what specific elements you think are potential contaminants. Are there heavy metals? Those, heavy metals are very easy, very inexpensive to monitor for. If you're going total volatile organics and semi-volatile organics, it's again, thousands of dollars per well, in addition to the sampling process, and then how often do you do it? In this case, I don't think we've seen any reason to monitor for chemical contamination.
Now you're testifying, so...
Okay, I just wanted you to know...
And I didn't...
...because it could be hundreds of thousands of dollars.
I understood that, which is why, just, could we do post facto, could you raise your right hand and swear to tell the truth, and the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Mr. Cudaro, could you, I should have sworn you in. Do you swear to, and Josh, do you swear to tell the truth retroactively?
I do.
I do?
I did.
I have.
You've got to remind me, we got to, the whole swearing in thing. I, I, thank you, I, you quantified the point I was trying to make. I don't know that tonight, we could come up with a groundwater monitoring program that would be enforceable. Or survive appeal, should it come to that.
Or be useful.
Or be useful.
Yeah.
However, I do think we should look to the future and try and come up with certainly groundwater levels, and I think the answer to the, to the engineer's question, I think the citizens are concerned about cadmium, PFAs, the things, the hydroscopic coating purported to be on the panels. That's, I think, what the baseline concerns are, but I don't know how I would quantify that or write a condition that says what we do about that.
We had a, we had one instance where we had a town well walking distance from the site, and we were concerned on the direction of the water. We wanted wells to figure out the direction of the aquifer in that particular site, because literally you could walk to a well.
And that was part of the review, and before, this is not an ongoing...
Right. I think it's project specific.
Yes. I'm suggesting that while this condition is in there, I'm not sure that we should enforce it or apply it to this case.
Well, everybody in that area is all on wells.
But what are we monitoring for? That's, that's my question. I'm not saying it's a bad idea. I just don't know what to say we're going to monitor for.
Water quality? But you can't, water quality really is testing the wells, not the aquifer.
Well, and even water quality, I mean, you was just pointing out.
Drinking water.
You could spend $30,000 for each.
Yeah.
Our water department has test wells all over town.
Yeah.
I pass them every day I go for a walk.
So there is some monitoring that already goes on.
I think maybe table this, talk to the water department, we have a town water department with...
But then we'll never get done in time for the applicant.
I don't, I agree with you, it won't. I don't think it's critical for this particular operation.
This project.
Right. I think for other applications, we're concerned, not, about some chemicals, but also about flows and levels.
Right.
Yes.
You got levels of water in town that are 40 feet. I mean, literally, if you have a fire with one of these projects, you're going to be in the well, the wells are going to be destroyed from, I don't know, the area.
That, I don't want to deliberate other projects.
I agree.
Do you think we can remove, I, I don't think we're prepared to write this condition.
Right.
I think we should.
Therefore, I think we need to remove it, if we're, tonight's when we have to do this.
Are you okay with that? I'm asking.
Well, we went through that in Fairland Hill, we put wells in there.
Those were test wells beforehand, this...
Right.
This isn't after...
We wanted to maintain them, and they said they didn't want to maintain them anymore, because they didn't want to pay for them.
Right. That's a different project, and that's what I was saying. If we're going to make it a condition for any project, we need to know what we're asking for. So we have some time for another project to get ready for that.
A good example is some of these other projects, the areas are being mined out before they're going to put anything in there, so in a case like that, I think it's warranted here, I don't think so.
What does that do?
So we're com, we're comfortable striking 51?
Yes. Reasonable people.
Josh, you think that's okay?
Yeah.
And Phil, you think that's okay?
I think that's the best move.
Okay. The applicant care if we take this? No. I, I think the spirit is in the right place, but I don't think we're ready to make this condition. We need, we need work.
I want to point out that it's, it is not at all an indication that we are not doing what we can to preserve the good water...
Correct.
...of the town.
Right. And, but what we have to do is write conditions that are effective.
Are, yes, effective is right.
You have two different conditions in town, you have the aquifer, then you have the wells.
Correct. I just wanted to put it out there.
Yep.
Right, agree too.
Okay. Mr. Buckland, do you have any thoughts before we strike this? Did Ken leave, or is he still there?
He go night-night?
He, as you said, that just left, so he may have put the wrong button.
He knew we were coming up.
If he comes back, let us know. All right, 52 is just a spurious number. 53 talks about the decommissioning bond. Every five years, you're going to submit a revised, fully inclusion, decommissioning financial security for our review, accounting for inflation, removal costs, the surety bond shall be reviewed, updated accordingly at the prevailing standard. The security will be based upon the standard that the board has established, which may be updated from time to time, and must be secured and remain enforced for the life of the project. Then, the standard today is based upon the publication titled Best Practices at the End of the Voltaic System Performance Period Technical Report, NREL TP 5 Charlie 0078678, dated February 21st. The report is available, and I gave the link. We've established a standard cost of $368 per kilowatt hour DC for solar modules, and $50 kilowatt for battery storage, with 125% contingency fee. The amount, this amount, has to be reviewed, we talked about above this amount.
This amount to be reviewed at...
Very beginning, it talks about...
Yeah, I know, I just had, or can I just get rid of that sentence? Just strike that sentence?
It says every five years.
Oh, yeah. That's the first sentence.
I'm going to strike that clause.
I just let Ken back in.
Oh, Ken. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, we, we had a discussion about groundwater monitoring, which you and I sort of had a discussion on by email. The, we all are sort of emotionally supportive of the idea. The discussion, I don't know how much of you heard, is we don't think we're prepared to write an effective condition at this point. What do they have to monitor, at what levels, how frequent, and what do they do if they find a change? So we're...
I don't think, I don't think you spend enough time on trying to look at the hydrogeology of the area to know which way the water is flowing, and how a facet is going, and in what directions, and who could be sensitive receptors to it. That is something that you didn't actually put on the record in the, in this application, but I think in future applications, you can be looking at the hazardous materials becoming exposed to the environment, and measuring them in the groundwater. And those are the things like the cadmium compounds...
Right.
In the, and the, the surface treatments of the panels. That may be, that may be something you want to consider in actually looking at, in testing in the groundwater.
For this application?
For not this application, because you don't, you didn't have enough, you don't have enough information to actually develop a good monitoring plan.
Okay, so you're sort of mirroring the discussion we had, which is, we're looking forward to future projects where we think this would be critical. And we do have information on hydrology and flows and baselines for some of the chemicals.
Right. Which makes sense that you use that material in the future plans, but I don't think in this case that that makes sense to include this as part of the conditions.
Okay. And, thank you, that's sort of what we concluded, it's a good idea, but we're not ready.
Right.
And then for future plans, if you and Phil and Josh could advise us on what any new applicant might have to provide that they haven't already provided, or that isn't covered by an engineering firm that wrote stormwater standards for the state, but, yeah, so we think we're, we want to be prepared for the, that's why this is sort of a learning experience for us, where what didn't we get in the process? Okay. Thank you. So you're, you're okay with us striking that, that condition because we're not ready?
Yes, I think that's appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Right now, we're talking about the decommissioning standard. The proposal presented is approved, okay, the decommissioning proposal presented, every five years, subject to condition that the cost of each item shown shall be reviewed and adjusted, again, every five years, and it goes with the recording. The form of security to be posted for decommissioning shall be approved by town council, and shall be automatically renewable at the prevailing standard. And on file, and then the decommissioning proposal on file is incorporated by reference. Does this wording, which I spent a lot of time thinking about, deal with the problems we've had in the past with applicants letting bonds expire, or arguing with us about establishing new rates? As written, does this seem to address those issues? It's not an issue for this applicant, but I was also trying to...
I would suggest adding upon, or five years or upon change of ownership.
Okay, so let's go back.
Which five years are you putting that after?
Well, it's every five years or earlier if the change of ownership, is that what you mean? Yeah.
Yeah.
So if after two years they changed the...
Every five years or at change of ownership.
Yeah. So it's really every five years or earlier upon a change of ownership.
Right. Well, do we have to say or earlier?
Yeah.
The word earlier has to be...
Well, if you just say or at change of ownership. Every five years or at change of ownership?
I'll just, the word earlier...
Five years...
Or at the change of ownership, which is not...
That should do it.
Is something different than five years.
Yes, right.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, and I don't have a condition here that says we need to get notified about change of ownership, but I think the new bylaw says that.
Yes, but we should, wouldn't be a bad idea to put that in here.
Okay.
Transfer of ownership.
Oh, we've got decommissioning here, maybe you do it right before that or something. It's the last item here, which doesn't have a number.
I hate to bring this up, but what if the ownership doesn't change, but the management does, which we had happen many times?
What, I don't understand the difference between ownership and management.
I'm just saying, we...
No, I'm trying, I'm trying to get you to explain to me, I don't understand.
We have solar arrays in town that have changed operating management.
Operating companies.
Operating companies, multiple times, from Brago to...
But isn't that ownership as well?
No, it's not ownership, it's management of. We've actually had... Brago was the management, the main one, and they've changed New Leaf, and then process it changed.
Okay, so, okay.
And then we got to notify somebody else.
Hold that thought till we get to the end, and we'll write a condition, ownership, change in ownership, or, let's go back, or site management.
Operations, operations isn't really operations.
At change of ownership.
Management.
Yeah.
Or...
And/or...
Management.
Management.
I think you want the owner of the property to hold that.
I think the owner of the property is the one that really needs to...
We do not get the decommissioning bond from the owner of the property.
Most of the property is the least.
Well, but I, yes, you're right, but the owner of the property is on the hook in the sense that special permits go to the land.
Right.
And if the owner-operator goes away, or the owner-operator, the lesserer goes away, it goes to the land, and the owner's on the hook.
So it wouldn't matter.
Well, but it, it sort of does. We could say change in ownership and/or management, the owner-operator shall submit, so the decommissioning bond. All right. So 54, in the event of a fire, the system shall be temporarily disabled, the applicant shall explain to the fire department, clause of the fire, the fire department shall propose any amendments to modify the facility. Then under decommission, zoning enforcement by certified mail of any proposed discontinuance, that's, that's another number, or I can move it up among...
We need to take out one of the two, the fire department... We need to take out one of the two, the fire department clauses.
Fire department, the clause of the fire. Oh, yeah, okay.
First one or the second one?
I'll just get rid of the second one.
From the Department of Retundancies Department.
And we'll move this decommissioning clause up to the general decommissioning.
Yeah. And just sorry to jump back, I think a couple of conditions. I think one of your conditions talks about how to establish the decommissioning bond being the NREL document.
Yes, or whatever standard is in place in the future.
Okay, that's what I was gonna... Okay, you got it.
I said that the planning board can amend the standard, and if it's different in the future, you got to use the new standard.
That's what I was gonna mention, but you captured it.
Just your standard.
Yeah, just review to make sure I got that, but that was the intent of what we've all said.
Thank you.
Okay. And then, so we'll move this decommissioning clause, and then we're going to add a new clause that Sam is going to tell me. The applicant, the applicant, and/or the owner-operator must inform the town of Wareham, the planning office, who do you want me to say, of any...
Must notify.
Must inform, must notify. We got that in the bylaws, but it's not in the... So when anything new would be covered, must notify the planning office, because we had that happen, and nobody notified us, right?
I would be specific in that, you know, you don't want them to notify the town custodian and feel they've notified.
I said notify the planning office?
Planning office makes sense.
Of any change in ownership, ownership or management of the project. Is that clear enough?
Yeah, the project, yep.
And/or subject property?
Say that again?
And/or subject property, the land that it sits on?
So you're saying if Mrs. Zimmer were to sell this, we would have to notify?
Do we need to? Just spitballing here.
Because you'd need a new bond if she was...
No, she's not, she's not a part of the bond.
She's not bonded.
If you're saying she, as the owner, she's absolutely never on the bond.
Well, she's, she's on the bond because it's tied to the land.
Correct.
But...
Project's the owner, very well be who's involved in the project.
And I think with Makepeace, they've got that covered 12 ways from Sunday. I'm not sure Mrs. Zimmer has thought about that. But certainly, if we issue a special permit that has this condition, it goes to the land.
Agreed. Runs with the land, yeah.
And that's why this is a condition for the special permit, not just the site plan. All right. You think we're covered, or do you want me to say?
I think that's...
Ownership of the land.
No, I think that's fine.
I think we're good.
I think, yeah, the whole change of subdivision, change in ownership of the land is problematic for our monitoring and tracking process, but it's not the planning board that has to do that. It's Josh's problem. Okay, that was the last of the conditions.
Okay. So I make a motion to accept items forty-five through fifty-four.
Fifty-five, because we added that.
Fifty-five, with the amendments as discussed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, if I can get that number into work. Yeah, it didn't work, but okay. All right. So we've got a blanket approval of the conditions as amended. Now, that leaves us, you want to vote on the project tonight? I mean, we're here.
No.
Well, let me tell you why that's going to be a problem if we don't vote tonight.
Okay, tell me why it's a problem.
Because we have to vote by the sixteenth.
Yep.
The next planning board meeting is the seventh, and I won't be here.
Ay yi yi. See, we made so many changes, I'd like to read it before I sign it. And I know, I'm just talking, we've made so many changes.
I know, I understand what you're saying.
You've always said this from day one. You want to read it.
I know, I agree that...
How do we accomplish that?
Put it in final form and read it.
You could hold a special meeting. A cycle meeting.
But when are you going to be able to have this, we going to be able to have this re-formatted?
I mean, just like the meeting we have.
No, no, I'm not...
It'll be out 10 minutes.
I'm not questioning it, but we, if I am not here...
Publish the agenda.
Then...
Then you can't even...
We can't even vote.
I know.
Correct. All right, you have four.
There's just a lot to digest.
No, no, I'm not questioning it. So how soon before we can have a revised draft?
That's the first question. We have notes over here, here, there, got to put it all together. That's a monumental task in itself.
Could we vote, like, on the, have a special, on the third?
What day of the week is the third?
Is it Thursday or Tuesday, the second? Just looking at...
I can't hear you, Jillian.
I'm just looking at, give the rest of the week to...
Wednesday's the second.
Yeah. Rest of the week to get this in good order.
Wednesday's ConCom that week, right?
Uh, this...
So if you did it on Thursday, the third?
Okay, we got time also. We could do it before the ConCom meeting, like we did the other day. It was 4:30, we were out of here at 10 minutes.
I've got to arrange, because my schedule is going to be arranged between now and, because I booked things, because we didn't have meetings.
No, we have a schedule in the fridge of where we're all going to be every day.
Yeah, no, I do as well, but I am not, I know that I've got conflicts on those days with grandchildren babysitting.
Bring them to the meeting.
No, I've got to go get them in Rhode Island, and I've got to go to Rhode Island, pick them up after school, so I know that I'm not available those days.
Sure.
Thursdays?
That's the day I've got to go, unless you want to do it this Thursday, but that's...
No, that's, to get it together, that's just too much to ask. Plus, he has another job, too.
No, he's the land use officer.
Monday, the 30th, would that work?
I believe Monday, the 30th works for me.
We have this week, which isn't a lot of time, but...
That's, gives you only three days, basically.
Yeah, Friday works.
I would prefer you tell me when you want it by, so if...
Tomorrow?
Tuesday, the first, correct?
Yeah, tomorrow at 8:00 AM. How does that sound?
Perfect. What, uh, tomorrow?
With losing that Friday, that's...
No, sorry.
Yeah, that's a lot.
I'm, okay, hang on, let me save this here.
We need to at least give a fair amount of work time to get all this together. You can't do that in a couple of days.
Do you want to do the 30th?
I'll do the 30th or October 1st, Tuesday.
That's still, it'll give you a whole lot of time.
You can make a vote and then do that after.
Hang on one second. I, I'm not listening, so I... All right, so I captured my revisions here as I knew.
Can you grant an extension?
All right. So what date were you talking, the 30th?
Yeah.
I'm available the 30th or the 1st, or the 2nd before... No, I can't do it the 2nd. I got to go, I got to go to, I got my granddaughter on the 2nd.
But generally, we wouldn't recommend having a half-cycle meetings on Wednesdays anyways, because they get pretty jam-packed.
And so Wednesday and Thursday, I could do Friday that week, the 4th. Well, we can still do a Zoom meeting. You're not closed, right, John, on the 4th?
Hey, Friday?
The town is closed, you're not closed.
No, we're open on the Fridays.
But Josh isn't here.
Josh is closed on Fridays.
Yes.
No, I'm just throwing options out. Jillian, you made a comment that was in earnest, or I didn't hear what you said?
Oh, if I can talk, I'd be happy to check.
I'm asking you a question. You can talk if I ask a question.
Well, I know in other boards, they have, I know in other boards, they've made preliminary votes, and then they have time to, on the, it's not, doesn't have to go public, and they can read through it, so you can say vote and then condition. So, I mean, it's just another...
Subject to finalization of the conditions.
That's pretty, I mean...
Because that does give us time after... I was going to do a straw vote tonight to find out if we even needed to...
Well, that's the other thing. If someone here feels tonight that they're voting in the negative, your conditions don't matter.
Or, well, they do, but the editing of the document...
Yeah, is less important.
Is less critical.
The timing of the editing of the document.
Just to confuse the issue, let's just pick a date.
You could take a vote to approve it with approved conditions from the board.
Well, because what I was, originally, the way we're going to do this is we're going to vote up or down, and then discuss the conditions. We tonight took a vote to protect the conditions.
Right.
So we could vote up or down, and then subject to the final conditions, which we could then have after the 7th. Or...
You could take a vote tonight to approve the project as...
Or deny.
Or deny. You're with the conditions to be approved at your October 7th meeting.
But do I have to be there to approve the conditions? Yes.
Yeah.
And I can't be there on the 7th.
So we're going to have to have a special meeting anyway.
We have to do it anyway.
The only way around that is to approve the conditions tonight, and none of us are ready to do that.
I'm not going to vote for that.
No, 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 I'm not asking, I understand, I'm not asking to do that. The other thing is, I mean, we don't really have to do it before the 7th. We have to do it before the 16th.
Okay, I'm happy about that.
But then we still have to have a, we're going to have to have a special meeting.
Yeah.
Because of the holidays.
So you guys are meeting on the 21st.
Too late.
Yep.
You are meeting on the 21st.
Yes.
Right? Would you extend the decision deadline?
I have to talk to my client. I know we're under a time crunch, too.
No, no, I, and...
I don't think...
We've closed a public hearing. You can't give us an extension, I don't believe. I think the law is 65 days from close of public hearing.
Well, let's just find a date, then, that works for you guys.
No, no, we're trying, we're trying.
Let me get my phone.
Need to pick a date that we all can make. That's the only choice.
I am available the 8th, the 9th, anytime, just not available on the 7th.
Yeah. Arbitrator, trial.
Well, and we don't have to have the meeting on the 7th and a special meeting. We could move...
I agree.
The 7th to another date, the 10th, which is Thursday. That gives us six days to get it filed. Is that, I mean...
Doable, yes.
And it's not a public hearing, so other than announcing two days in advance...
The agenda.
The agenda.
Right.
So is that date good with everybody?
So we're going to cancel the 10/7, and it's now going to be...
Well, that's what's on the table.
Right.
So are you planning to have a full meeting on the 10th or a...
Special meeting?
Just for this.
Right now, there's nothing on the horizon that we need to deal with.
Right now, it would be this, this would be it, because I'm just trying to figure
out the scheduling conflicts for this, because Thursdays are either sewer commissioner or school committee.
Doesn't have to be in this room, but do you have staff if we did it in 27?
The room over there is.
That's fine.
You have two rooms over there that are staff.
That's what I said, room 27, but he has to have staff to run the meeting.
Yeah, well, it's more specifically that you guys are hybrid, so we have to be in a room that is accommodating to the hybrids, so this room...
We also have a time issue. We can meet earlier than your meeting.
Yeah, you definitely can.
And get that done.
But that doesn't allow us deliberation, deliberation, or... I'm okay either way. I can do the 10th anytime. I can meet midnight to 4:00.
Is there a motion? So is the 10th good with everybody?
Mike?
Is the 10th or 7th?
Well, we would move, we wouldn't do both.
Cancel the 7th.
We would move the 7th and move it to the 10th.
Yeah, I'm good.
Jane?
I'll make it work.
Well, no, no, can you, can you do it or not? When you say, I...
I'll make it work.
Okay. I don't, I'm not trying to, because I can't make the 7th work, but I don't want to put you in a bind.
Yeah, no, I'll make it work.
Okay.
One way or another.
Ditto. Make it work.
Yeah. Okay. What about you?
That's it is.
And we'll work with you to find, what time on the 10th? Do you want to try and do it earlier, or do you want to do it at 6:00 in another room?
I would also clear with Patty, because she does the scheduling for those spaces.
I can talk to her tomorrow.
Yeah. We'll find, but what time are we going to shoot for?
Are we going to have a regular meeting?
We're only going to deal with this topic.
This one thing. 4:30, sure.
Seems to work.
How long do we have if we meet at 4:30 then?
For that space, I'm not entirely sure.
No, for this space, how long?
For this space on Thursday, they will be meeting at 6:30.
So we would have two hours.
Yeah, that's funny.
That's fine.
You guys will have to be out of here enough time for them to start at 6:30.
Right.
That will give us enough time to get the, whatever finding, or whatever...
Right.
That it's, that we're addressed.
Recorded properly.
Yep. Make a motion, adjourn.
Wait, wait, we got to make a motion to change the meetings first.
Jillian, did that work for you?
What, what doesn't work?
Retraction, unless, I mean, maybe.
Well, I mean, we love that you're here. At 4:30, you can't come.
Maybe.
What time could, what...
How long it's going to go.
What time would you, could you, you don't know, it could go till all hours of the...
Don't worry about it.
She's not going to be adding anything to it.
Well, she wants to be here.
I know she wants to be here, I just would like to get it done.
No, no, you helped, and we're glad you came, we're glad Phil Kenny came, and... What do you, what do you, what are your thoughts?
I'll do my best to have it done. Don't worry about it. At this point.
Okay, well, we're trying to...
Try to make everybody happy.
Yeah. Okay. So 4:30 on the 10th. So we're going to cancel the 7th, we're going to move it to 4:30 on the 10th.
Yep.
Josh needs to confirm this room, and we've got to get the agenda posted in time. John can provide staff.
Do we need a motion to change the date? It's just scheduling, I don't think...
It's just, I don't think...
Public care.
No.
Yeah.
We just need to publish the agenda.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 We adjourn at 10:20, 10:40.